Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Meeting of the Special Improvement District. Explore Milburn Short Hills. I will be serving as Secretary this evening in absence of Tracy Katz Levine. Who is recovering from surgery and we wish her a speedy recovery. And I will go through all of the administrative items until we appoint a chair. As you all know, Michael Parlavickio did not come back after his term ended last year, so we'll have to reappoint a chair later on. I'll read the sunshine compliance notice, the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known. Was provided at least forty eight hours prior to the commencement of the meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA ten four dash six. Open Public Meetings Act. Notice was published posted in Town Hall and on the Township's website by notification of newspapers on December nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Of the schedule for twenty twenty four and providing notice to the Township Clerk. I'll read the submission statement. The purpose of a special improvement district is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. Milburn's middle Milburn Township Sid ordinance designates a new district management corporation. Whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of Milburn Township through increased marketing and visibility. Improved and renewed infrastructure and local business development and engagement. We can also look the flag.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, if we could have a moment of silence, Albert Jacob was the owner of the Sanoco on Short Hills. On Short Hills Avenue. Unfortunately, he passed away on December twenty seventh of last year. So we did send a letter of condolence to his family on behalf of the bid. But just if we can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'll do a roll call, but why don't we do introductions first since we have at least one new member this evening? So we'll start with Ms. Clark and I will then do a formal roll call.
Hello, I'm Alexa Clark. I am co-owner of Taste Buddy on Milburn Avenue.
Ben Stoller, representing the Township Committee.
And Stephen Weiner, my wife and I own Splurge Bakery over on Main Street.
Richard Wasserman, serving as Mayor's representative and and I guess I guess co-founder. A moment. Jackie.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Meeting of the Special Improvement District. Explore Milburn Short Hills. I will be serving as Secretary this evening in absence of Tracy Katz Levine. Who is recovering from surgery and we wish her a speedy recovery. And I will go through all of the administrative items until we appoint a chair. As you all know, Michael Parlavickio did not come back after his term ended last year, so we'll have to reappoint a chair later on. I'll read the sunshine compliance notice, the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known. Was provided at least forty eight hours prior to the commencement of the meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA ten four dash six. Open Public Meetings Act. Notice was published posted in Town Hall and on the Township's website by notification of newspapers on December nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Of the schedule for twenty twenty four and providing notice to the Township Clerk. I'll read the submission statement. The purpose of a special improvement district is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. Milburn's middle Milburn Township Sid ordinance designates a new district management corporation. Whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of Milburn Township through increased marketing and visibility. Improved and renewed infrastructure and local business development and engagement. We can also look the flag.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, if we could have a moment of silence, Albert Jacob was the owner of the Sanoco on Short Hills. On Short Hills Avenue. Unfortunately, he passed away on December twenty seventh of last year. So we did send a letter of condolence to his family on behalf of the bid. But just if we can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I'll do a roll call, but why don't we do introductions first since we have at least one new member this evening? So we'll start with Ms. Clark and I will then do a formal roll call.
Hello, I'm Alexa Clark. I am co-owner of Taste Buddy on Milburn Avenue.
Ben Stoller, representing the Township Committee.
And Stephen Weiner, my wife and I own Splurge Bakery over on Main Street.
Richard Wasserman, serving as Mayor's representative and and I guess I guess co-founder. A moment. Jackie.
Good evening, everyone. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg, serving in the Resident Elect Chair. Thank you.
Timothy Hoffman, the Assistant Business Administrator, representing the Township Administration.
Ryan Cooper, Council to Explore Milburn Short Hills.
Amanda Dean, Marketing Director of Explore Milburn Short Hills.
Steve Grillo, Executive Director of Explore Milburn Short Hills. Welcome to twenty twenty four, everyone. So tonight, Tracy Katz Levine could not be here. She's recovering from surgery, as I mentioned, and Ashley Schultz unfortunately has COVID, so he is not joining. Joining us either. With that. We have to perform the reorganization of the board. We're going to start with the oath of allegiance, so I'm going to pass this out and then Mr. Cooper will administer it to everyone.
Do we stand or sit for this?
Great, and would you like me to administer the oath to?
What would you do every month?
Yeah, that'd be that'd be great. So I'll ask, so let me introduce myself again. I know I know many of you, but some of you I've met for the first time, so welcome Councilman Zoller. Welcome, congratulations. Welcome all to the new board members. My name is Ryan Cooper, Cooper L C in Council to Explore Milburn Short Hills. So I will administer the oath of office to all of the members of the Board of Trustees. And so I will ask that you would all stand up at this moment. Again, I should raise your right hand, please. And state after me and I'll try and break this up. So I state your name.
Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Milburn Short Hills Business Organization, Inc., Board of Trustees.
Milburn Short Hills Business Organization, Inc., Board of Trustees.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. You can all sit down. You've all been sworn in. If you could just sign them and then pass them down, I believe you have to authorize them. Great, so please pass them to Mr. Cooper. The next item of business is the conflict of interest and compensation policy. So this is something that we do every year. I'm going to pass out copies and then there's a separate signature page as well. And so you will keep the copy of the document and then you will return the signature page to me. And this is the same document that we provided to all of you last year. So keep the larger stapled one, return the one pager to me. And while you're all doing that, I'm going to also pass out our board member responsibilities document. It's a short two-page document that describes the obligations of the members of the board. We also did this last year in our reward as well, and that is for you to keep.
Proposition.
Thank you.
Trustee, right on the. And give this back to you.
The conflict of interest comes to me.
Okay.
And then keep the.
Packet.
The the board responsibilities document.
What's what's today's date?
Eighteen.
We're almost done with paperwork.
Sir.
All right. Next, we have election of officers. So as you all recall, we have three officers. And Ben, just so that you know, you are a voting member of the board. The Township Committee Liaison is a voting member. We have two non-voting. Richard is the Mayor's Designee and Tim as the Business Administrator's Designee. So everybody else has a vote, as well as the two members that are absent. Okay, we got to get you on boarded here, you know, we got to know all the rules. Okay, so election of officers. So we have a Treasurer, a Secretary, and a Chair. This year, we we have a vacated Chair position. But we do have two individuals, Tracy, who is the current Secretary, and Stephen, who is the current Treasurer, who would like to return in those roles. And then we also need to take action to find a Chair. So why don't we do the Secretary and Treasurer first? Stephen, I assume you will accept the nomination once again?
Yes, I do.
And Tracy has confirmed such via email. And so are there any other nominations for those glorious positions of Treasurer and Secretary of the Bid Board?
They are great positions. They are glorious.
Hearing no others, can we do a roll?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to be clear. If you could just state the motion for the record.
Sure, would someone make a motion to approve both?
I would like to make a motion to approve. The. Reassignment of Tracy Katz Levine as Secretary and Stephen Weiner as Treasurer. Of Explore Milburn Short Hills for the calendar year twenty twenty four.
Is there a second? All right, the motion. Lieberberg, Second Clerk. Roll call vote. Alexa Clark. Tracy Katz Levine, absent. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben Stoller.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I abstain because I don't know?
You absolutely can.
Okay, so I'll abstain.
Okay. Mr. Schultz is not here and Mr. Weiner.
Yes, I assume I can vote.
You can vote for yourself.
Yes, you can vote for yourself. You can vote for yourself.
Right, terrific. Now we need to have someone make a motion for.
The motion, just for the record, the motion carries.
The motion carries three yes, no nos, and one abstention. All right, we need another motion to appoint a Chair and naming that individual.
Ryan, am I am I obligated to to make a motion to?
Yeah, you can you can make it and it'll be a nomination. So you can nominate a person for the Chair.
Yeah, sure, that's okay.
And you can do so, yes.
So with that being said, I'd like to nominate my good friend Jackie Lieberberg to be Chair. As a longtime member, she's intricately involved with all that goes on with the bid. She's a tireless worker and and a great friend.
I didn't say that about Stephen. I mean, I'm just saying, you know.
So I'd like to make the make a motion that she become the next Chair.
Do I have a second?
I wholeheartedly second the motion. I very much enjoyed working with Jackie and look forward to in the coming year.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, just is there any? You have to call for any other nominee?
Oh, yes, are there any other nominations? You're in none, we'll take a roll call vote. Alexa Clark.
Yes.
Jackie Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben Stoller.
Who wants to abstain?
And Stephen Weiner?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, no no, one abstention. Okay, very good. Now we are on to committee assignments. This should be pretty easy. Yes, Mr. Cooper.
So at this time, as Chair pro temp, I would ask that. And trustee Lieberberg, take the chair and.
Got it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Big shoes to fill. Michael did a great job, so.
Madam Chair, would you mind if I continue?
No, please do, sir.
Okay, very good. So we have four standing committees. The Marketing and Branding Committee, Events and Planning, Business Advocacy, and Bylaws and Governance. Amanda staffs the Marketing and Events. I staff Business Advocacy, Bylaws and Governance. Tracy has asked to come back in her role on both marketing and branding as well as events and planning. Lex has been on that as well. So we are great with two members, ideally three if we can have it. So would you like to continue in your role? Okay. And then do we have anybody else that would like to join either the Marketing Committee or the Events Committee? Okay, and you're going to be exempt because you managed to say that you have six other committees you serve on, Ben. So you do not have to join any subcommittees. Out of difference to your schedule. Please don't feel obligated. Business Advocacy. We have Ashley, Jackie, and Richard. However, since Michael left the board, we do need to fill a seat on the Governance Committee. So my suggestion was that Ashley and Richard would remain on Business Advocacy. And then Stephen and Jackie would be the members of the Bylaws and Governance Committee. And then everyone is accounted for.
Yes, sounds good.
So I'll just read those off for the record. Marketing and Branding is Tracy and Alexa. Events and Planning, Tracy and Alexa. Um, events, yes, events planning. Business Advocacy, Ashley and Richard. Bylaws and Governance, Stephen and Jackie. Okay, very good. And then I'm just going to pass out the meeting schedule for next year. There was a one minor change since our December meeting. So you'll actually notice on here. May eighteenth is going to be Founding Day and the Centennial of Taylor Park. It was a couple of weeks earlier, if I remember. So we changed that date. So just update your calendars here.
But our meetings are all the same.
Our meetings are the same. So what you'll see here, folks, is it's broken down by month. The board meeting is listed in the second column. The only one that deviates from the six thirty start is our annual meeting in October, which we always do at five thirty. The Advisory Committee, which none of you serve on, but you are welcome to attend. That's going to be in January, April, September, and November. And then the events themselves, Restaurant Week, Founding Day, Girls' Night Out, et cetera. Those are listed in the the far right column. So just circle your calendars and certainly if anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out. And this is, of course, available on our website. We will send you plenty of email updates as we. All right. I'll do the minutes since it's also Tracy's job. Okay, and then I think I'm going to stop talking.
Really appreciate Tracy.
Yeah, really appreciate it, right? Okay, so we have three sets of closed session minutes. So that would be the minutes from the September twelfth, twenty twenty three meeting. The November sixteenth, twenty twenty three, and the December fourteenth, twenty twenty three. To my recollection, the only member that was absent was Lex in the December meeting and obviously Ben was not appointed at that time.
So just to clarify, because this comes up frequently and the ultimate vote is. One for the decision of the the individual trustee, but not being present is not a bar to voting to approve the minutes. If you believe those minutes to be an accurate reflection of the of what took place at the meeting. Okay, so I know many people often abstain and again, it decisions up to the individual board member. Just wanted to communicate that it's not a legal requirement. So with that said.
Should we do the one by one?
Oh, so my no, well, my advice would be a motion. Either a motion to approve all four or serial motions to approve them individually, whatever is the board's pleasure.
One of you can make a motion to do whatever Mr. Cooper suggests.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Closed Session September twelfth. The closed session on Thursday, the sixteenth. As well as the minutes for the executive session minutes on Thursday, December fourteenth. As well as the so the four, as well as the minutes for the Milburn Short Hills. Board meeting on Thursday, December fourteenth at six thirty. So that's four. We are we are voting on the minutes for four different distinct meetings.
Okay.
I move that motion.
Second.
Alexa Clark. Tracy Katz Levine, absent. Jackie Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben Stoller.
Abstain.
Ashley Schultz is absent. And Stephen Weiner.
Yes.
Very good. So that motion carries three yes, no, no, and one abstention. All right. I am done. We have a special presentation. Is Mary Lima on the call? Very good. Oh, also, just so before we get into it, did anybody not get a copy of their annual report? You have you did not? I know Ben got one.
It's in our last year.
Yeah, you should have gotten it. Okay. And then also, does anybody need a new board member pick? They get lost.
I I believe I do. Full disclosure.
Yeah.
You want them?
You have them? All right, I have five. So that's for you. You want to pass those out? Okay. All right, so while Amanda is doing that, I just want to share, we're very excited. To have started a partnership with a new lifestyle magazine called Milburn Short Hills Magazine. They are publishing their first edition imminently. It was supposed to come out in print today, so we'll get some hard copies very soon. We do have a digital copy that we're going to show. They are new to Milburn Short Hills. They approached us, Explore, probably in in the late fall about getting involved and profiling local businesses. They are very, very business business centric. They have done some really great features on some local businesses as well as Explore. Has a two-page write-up in each one, which is the Around Town selection. And so we profile events and new businesses that open, et cetera. It's a very highly professionally run magazine. It's part of a network of a bunch of others and Mary can speak to the full breadth of that, but we're very excited. And we look forward to a great year of monthly publications coming out. So I think it's going to be a terrific magazine to work with and we're thrilled that they gave us the opportunity to take the lead on this. So if you could promote Mary, we can welcome her to the call.
She's promoted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Barely. Can you speak up or we'll?
Okay, can you hear? Is this better?
That is better. You want to turn your camera on?
Oh, is my camera not on? That's not good. That better? Can you see me?
Nope, not yet.
Well, that's not good. Should be here. Hmm. I didn't even realize I wasn't. All right, view. Let's see if we could just do view.
Because the name is across the screen, the camera's off.
Yeah. The camera's off, Mary.
I know, I'm trying to.
Yeah, according to the computer.
Yeah. It's like here.
Oh, goodness.
Pressure.
What the heck? Right, hold on. Thought we were all good to go here. Um. Woo.
Well, don't worry about it.
Okay, so anyway, I'm I'm very honored to be, you know, we are honored actually to be launching this new Milburn and Short Hills Magazine. With the January issue just days away in people's mailboxes. Our company, Wayne Scott Media, has been a leading publisher, as Steve mentioned, in the state for more than thirty years. And just last year, we ventured into the targeted town magazine space. We're not the only ones, we know that. Our first magazine debuted in in Spring Lake this past April. Since then, we've also started magazines in Manasquan, Tena Fly, one in Austin, Texas. And you know, our hope is to have thirty magazines in our town portfolio by the end of the year. We also, you know, we we also publish Bergen Magazine, Morrison Essex Magazine, New New Jersey Home Magazine. But I I definitely wanted to thank Steve and Explore Milburn Short Hills most of all for being, you know, so gracious to Tom Flannery. Who is the group publisher and myself. In sharing information about the town and coming up alongside us, you know, in this launch. We are super happy to be partnering with Explore Milburn Short Hills. And we are confident that the magazine is going to definitely provide great exposure for your organization every month. Like Steve said, you will be supplying content about new business openings, events taking place. I didn't realize you guys were going to have a girls' night out, so I'm very excited about that coming up. Can you hear me there? Okay, great. Steve and I just wanted to to mention that the the department is actually going to be called Around Town. And we think it will be a real win-win for both of our organizations. So I'm here to answer any questions.
I I have a question.
Yes.
Is this is this publication Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg Chair? Is this publication going to be distributed to every household in Milburn and Short Hills?
Virtually all households. It's thirty five hundred residences. That will be it will be reaching on a monthly basis. And we have a website. We will be offering the the magazine digitally. We will, you know, we have social media and email blast, that kind of thing. So but but the nice thing about it is we're we're really, the way, the reason why I think this might be a little bit different than. Some that are perhaps, you know, in reaching mailboxes currently. Is that we are going to champion local editorial and we are. Really hot to trot to feature people. And that's going to be a big part of this magazine. And of course, partnering with local businesses for sure. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, this is Ben Stoller, a town council member. How will you determine the thirty five hundred residences from the sixty three hundred or so residents in town?
It's on.
Or yeah, how individual households?
It's a it's a it's a mixture. We don't just want to do it, you know, by. By household income, Ben. We want to we want to also do it by age groups. So we want we want a a nice mix. I mean, ideally, how many how many would you ideally want us to go to?
Well, I I just would like to understand how you are distributing it.
Yeah.
It's by income, if it's by age group, if it's by political affiliation, what what?
No.
What is the algorithm that you're distributing it by?
Exactly. It's it's it's. Trying to hit both, not only household income, because obviously a lot of our advertisers. Want to reach a high household income, which is great, but we also want to reach young families. So it's it I would say it's a mix if that if that answers your question. I mean, you know, it's 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 not just by income.
Mary, this is Steve. Would you mind taking us through a couple of the highlights? And we have the digital copy up. I don't know if you can see it on your shared screen, but we have it up for the audience.
I can indeed. So. The. Cover. Is of course Emily Pampiski, who has. The new gallery in, I'm just trying to move this. Is this not moving? Yeah, I can. Can I flip it or? Yeah, I can, can I flip it or?
No, you can't, but, but Tim, Tim here can, so just tell him what you want.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, so, um. We, I think that this first issue, which you know, has been in the works, um, for a couple of months. Um, is a great representation of, of the thrust. Of editorial that we would like to, um, to feature. Um, obviously, we're going to, you know, we can, we're only as good as, um. As our advertisers, as advertising partners as well, in fact, as far as advertising partners go. We are looking for, you know, uh, we're looking for basically, uh, business sponsorships, if you will. So we are really looking for folks to commit to us on a monthly basis, so they. Um, are in the magazine, um, you know, regularly. And, um. That support from the businesses obviously is crucial and will, will help us be the, um, you know, the high level. Product that we, you know, that we aspire to. Um, you know, the photography is important, as, as you know, and we have a great photographer, we have great writers. As, as I started, um, you know, in the beginning to, to talk about the history of Wayne Scott, we have a lot of firepower, which I think is one of our. Um, you know, a real strong suits. And, um, you know, the, one thing about it is that I, I don't actually live here, I did actually. I, I did have a brother, who, I have a brother who, who lived here formally. Um, many, you know, some years ago in the early two thousands, so I have spent many, uh. Um, you know, family holiday in Short Hills and I have friends here and I've been, um. You know, I've been working, of course, with, uh, Wayne Scott Media for, for many years and I. Um, know a lot of the, um, you know, the folks, the business owners in the town. Like, for example, Ashley Schultz is somebody I've worked with in the past and, um. Many of the business owners, so I'm pretty comfortable, you know, being in, being in the town and, and I'm very, very excited. To delve a little bit deeper. Um. What do you guys think? Does it look, I feel, I feel like I'm. A little bit adrift here without. Having my, uh, profile here, I'm not.
So it's a, it's a monthly publication, correct?
It is.
Okay.
So it's, it's ambitious to, to, um, you know, to capture the kind of editorial that we, we, we want. Um, you know, the. The, again, the thing that is going to differentiate us is, is the, you know, championing local editorial. That families and residents will want to read. And not want, you know, and not be moved to throw, throw it out. Um, so that's why we feel as though if we can keep the caliber of the editorial super, super high, I think we have a. A real opportunity to buoy the businesses. And, you know, be a voice for the community and be a connector in some sorts.
I, I have a question, is there, is there a range of pricing in terms of what you ask for the businesses that wanna advertise with you?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, again, as I said, I, I worked, you know, with some of the other magazines, so, uh, for example, Morrison, Morrison Essex Magazine. And that, um, you know, that goes to thirty thousand, so the, the basic price point for, you know, for. For a full page runs around almost three thousand dollars. For this, we are, um, we are asking, um, you know, and, and we have a, um. You know, a tiered, a, a tiered rate sheet, and basically for, um, you know, for two years. You know, if you, if you came on for a two-year commitment, um, you know, the fee would be, um, fourteen ninety five. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, um, thirteen fifty, thirteen forty-five. And, um, but you know, basically, it runs around. A lot of the folks are, some of the folks are, are committing to, to the twelve month and the, and also the two-year, we also have a thirty-six. And that, you know, would be a little bit lower.
And if they want, if, uh, if businesses are interested, do they contact you directly, we have your con, your contact?
Yes, yes, contact, contact me.
In the publication.
I'm in the publication, um, I. Am, uh, you know, I'm around town setting up meetings. Uh, we just aligned ourselves with the book house, so they are going to have a department as well, Steve, I don't know if we let you know that. So we're excited about that. Um. But there's, um, you know, we're working with a lot of the real estate folks, we're look, working with a lot of the interior design folks. Um, you know, the home, home improvement folks. And, uh, you know, we, we have a couple of, um. A couple of categories, which I think we shouldn't be too, too hard to, you know, convince folks to join us and that would be. You know, financial wealth advising, um, you know, a, a, a dentist in town. Um, so, so we're, we're looking for, you know, we, we're still on the hunt for some categories and, and it's a great. You know, a great time to align with us because we're really fl, you know, we're flexible, we're willing to, um, you know, to jump through hoops for folks. And, um. We're excited.
She have special pricing for explore members?
We haven't discussed that.
Yeah, may I mention it?
Why not?
I'm just wondering, are you gonna, uh, initiate some special pricing for members of Explore that are in, within our parameters or of our business districts?
Um. Isn't everybody, isn't, isn't everybody in the, I mean, are we?
No.
Is it, is this like a, is this a subset you're talking about that I don't know about?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And what, and, and?
Steve can, Steve could review with you that offline, but there is.
Yeah.
I, but I do believe that part of the worth of value of the organization is to, uh, present our businesses. With, um, some ideas and some, uh, marketing initiatives that may be compelling to grow their businesses, so if in fact. Um, there's a special opportunity that can be extended to them as you launch. Your inaugural issues, I think that would be a, um, a compelling, uh, strategy for, for you and for us. So, just putting it out there.
Absolutely, I look forward to talking to Steve about that. For sure.
It was in the yellow highlighter. Thank you. Thank you, Mary, so very much, it's been a pleasure working with you guys and we're looking forward to the hard copies to come.
Hard copies for sure, alright, thanks all, alright, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
I also assume she's gonna put some in, uh, you know. I mean, obviously, town, like all the local places that would be interested in. It's free, right, so we wanna get this out as, as much as possible.
You know, like a stack in certain.
Yeah, a stack in, in Splurge Bakery, a stack in, in Taste Buddy, right, a stack in Town Hall, um. I think, um.
Yeah, we, we get deliveries of that, just like we do when we get a promotion out of Jersey.
Yeah. Um. And perhaps maybe at some point she can have a presentation to, you know, business, the business owners that may be interested in. Hearing a little bit more about, about this publication once. Once we get some traction, maybe not now or February, but. Once we see how it's received and what the content is. Um. I think it's really important if we can, um, diversify the editorial content. If she asks us for our opinion, not just us, but. Um, maybe she needs an intern. Um, but I'm just mentioning that it, it, it could be a opportunity for. For expansion, that's all. Cause we all know that we're lacking in, in print media, so to speak.
Yes.
So, okay. Enough said. Treasurer's report, I, I'm sorry, Steve, did you want, did you wanna continue? Is there anything else? Treasurer's report, Mr. Weiner.
Yes, thank you. New chair? Chair, they can chair a person, um, yes, so.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chairperson, sorry. I know, I'm teasing, you gotta have a sense of humor. Um, yeah, first, uh, wrapping up last year in your materials, there is a, as of December thirty-one, uh, kind of our budget and our final report. Uh, the balance in our bank as of December thirty-one was thirty-six thousand and seventy-one dollars even. Um, we did very well, um, in terms of, um, you know, rounding out the year, having, caring for that balance. Um, we are expecting approximately fifty-five thousand, or is it exactly fifty-five thousand dollars from the town in mid-February?
Fifty-five thousand, slight change, but yes.
Yeah, 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 I think it's not exact, but, uh, so we'll be seeing that as income, and then of course, as everyone remembers, we're dependent on the receipt of. Of, uh, when taxes are paid, but as you can see in the last year's summary, we did achieve one hundred percent, uh, collection of the special assessment. Which is terrific, I, it may be the first time I got a hundred percent, I think it's always been a few percentages off, as I recall, but that was great. Um, rest of the numbers again are in your packet, we also have. That check fraud incident, finally, very good news, uh, we recovered in full. Amount has been deposited, Steve, what was the final check amount that?
It was eight thousand dollars even.
Yes, that's right. On a check that was originally written for.
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
Exactly, yeah.
It was stolen out of the mail. Then we went through the fraud process.
We reported it, yeah, just for Ben, and, and it took a few months to recover fully, but we did.
It was quite some time, we made a police report, et cetera, um, but then the bank handled it. We received the check in full for the, the amount that was stolen.
Yep, so good news, we can cross that off our list. Right out of, uh, sorry, Melbourne Post Office, we think, or Short Hills Post Office, yeah. Um, so budget refresher, also included in your materials, attachment, uh, five B is in Baker. Excuse me, is, is just the, uh, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four budget, which you've seen several times now, it's been presented. Um. You'll see a lot of grants, our proposed bottom-line income, which includes new grant money is two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, six-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. Just to remind everybody of the process, um. Certain steps have already occurred, December nineteenth, we had our initial, our public hearing and adoption by the township committee. Uh, then January twelfth, the final draft of the CIT role was presented by the tax assessor. I presume today, the notice of hearing of the CIT assessment was published, it's as of to, the date is today.
I believe so, and then I believe the envelopes were actually mailed, uh, to all the assessed properties yesterday.
Oh, great, so ahead of the January twenty-third date, which is nice. Uh, and then just two more, February sixth, we have the role, uh, public hearing and consideration of approval by the township committee. Uh, for the budget, and then of course, as I mentioned, fifty-five thousand dollars, we get that payment. Um, in, in mid-February, that's what we've been doing since we were formed, uh, to, to help with, uh, the expenses until the assessments start, uh, being received. So, any questions?
I just wanna clarify, um, the CIT role process, um, cause it's not something that you guys ever get involved in, it's. It's something that I do with the tax assessor, um, and so every year, the tax assessor prints. An Excel sheet with every single property in the CIT. Um, there's a breakout as to what percentage of commercial uses on that property, we only assess the commercial portion. Um, and then it breaks down on the commercial assessed value versus the percentage that gets us to the two-hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar assessment. So I go through that, um, I compare it to the year prior, make sure that no properties are missing, make sure there's any changes to those properties. Um, that that's, uh, dealt with, and then of course, if new properties potentially come on the roll, um, that's dealt with as well, and so. Um, what the township committee will be asked to approve is that list, uh, certainly the public has the opportunity to come. And contest if they feel like their property has been, uh, miscalculated. Um, so there's always the possibility that someone will say, no, my property isn't really a hundred percent commercial, it's actually fifty percent commercial. Um, that hasn't happened in the past, but that is the, the public's, uh, right to do, uh, should, should there be an error, but. Um, I've gone through this with the tax assessor, uh, we both feel like the role is correct and it will be presented, um, on February sixth, the township committee. And then that role is what is then. Actually collected from the, the property owners. Any questions on the technical aspect of it? Okay. Oh, I did wanna talk about one specific item, so in your packets, it's attachment five C, uh, it's right behind the twenty-twenty-four budget. So this year, um, we really wanted to co- concentrate on grant funding as well as free services that are available. Um, and so last year, I went through probably about two-hundred-and-fifty potential programs, uh, through the New Jersey Council of Grantmakers. And I isolated down about forty or so that we would be eligible for as an improvement district. Um, what you see on attachment five C, there's the submitted and pending, um, and so I've been. Connecting with NJEDA, NJ Transit, LISC, NJDCA, as well as some traditional bank funders, Columbia Bank, TD Citizens. And so they're all in various stages, um, but I did want to, um, just highlight. Um, we had a great meeting with LISC yesterday, which is a national not-for-profit that, uh. Funds variety of improvements, and we actually talked about creative placemaking, um, to try to helping engage. Um, not only the Chinese and Indian communities that have created, have, have now, um, become substantial in the population. But also, um, with the, uh, development of affordable housing in the town, uh, we don't, wanna certainly make sure that we're creating. Um, accessible spaces and public spaces as well, so, um, LISC has some, uh, some great tools for that as well as, um, some potential funding there, but all of this is in play. Um, there's a couple of others in the further discussion category, um, there's a couple of different programs where, um, they're not. Available yet until February or March, so we'll be checking on those, and then, um, we went through about a dozen or so where we're ineligible, whether it's based on. Geography or, um, some of them don't allow you to apply if you have a funding source like a tax assessment. Um, and then, uh, so, so just went through about forty of these, I think we made great headway and we've had a, a bunch of meetings over the last two weeks. So we're getting a lot of traction on that, um. And that is it for this report, but this will be an ongoing report that will include in the, uh, budget each month, so you'll see as we make progress. Uh, whether we receive funding or we receive some type of, uh, training or, or other type of program that's, uh, just a free service. So, there's no questions, but I'm happy to answer.
Well, uh, Steve, you wanna just highlight the website program for our storefronts, because I, I still, I still can't get over it. I still, and, and as somebody that works.
Do you, do you mind if I get to that later in my report? Cause that's in there.
Yeah, I just don't want you to miss that.
I won't miss it, I promise, I even have the pizza party list of all the businesses that have received free websites in town.
Yeah.
So, I promise you, I won't miss it. We're up to Mr. Stoller.
Yes, Township Committee report, Mr. Stoller, is there anything you wanna mention from the Township Committee as the liaison for this board that we should be aware of?
Now, we, uh, had our second Township Committee, I went through a few points from, uh, discussions that, uh, Mr. Gerlo and I had prior, working on, uh. Mentioned, uh, some work, uh, you know, for the flooding that we had, our potential flooding, but luckily we were spared. Uh, some sandbagging, uh, was in the back of the, with, uh, Taste Buddy as well and, uh, with Tonino's and such, and, uh, just, uh. Knock on wood, happy that we were able to avoid a disaster downtown and, uh. I guess we have snow on the way tomorrow, so, I guess my, uh, twelve-year-old keeps checking in with me, see if the schools can.
Early dismissal.
What's that?
Early dismissal.
Oh, really, okay, I haven't seen it yet, so she gives it to you. And, and happy to be here too, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Hoffman, Business Administrator's report, Essex, uh, Two Street Conversion, public meeting, you wanna tell us a little bit about that, please?
Sure, good evening, everybody, so there will be a public meeting for the Essex Street two-way conversion, either in early to mid-February, once we have a concrete date, we, that will be broadly advertised. Um, just have a couple other updates to share, uh, that will, that may impact the business community in one way or another. Uh, PSENG will be continuing to do more work throughout town, but we'll be conducting overnight work. At the corner of Spring Street and Melbourne Avenue in about two weeks. Um, that work will be done between eight, be done between eight PM and eight, uh, six AM. Um, as PSENG is tying in the gas, gas veins, again, that will be communicated further when we know specifics. Um, there will also be some service work done overnight at the corner of Melbourne Ave and Main Street over a three-day work period, uh, three-day period. That work timeline is still to be determined, but again, that will also be shared once that is known. Um. Other than that, the Township Committee's, uh, going to have a second reading of a developmental, development regulations and zoning ordinance update, uh, on the February sixth meeting. Um, so there'll be the public hearing for that, but that's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
A quick question, um, if I could. You know, in connection with the gas lines and all the work, do you know over the winter, are they able to then, when they're done, like redo the streets? Because they're really, those potholes and the temporary fillers are really kind of, in my neighborhood in Glenwood where we live, but even in the commercial streets, I'm just seeing where they were. There's temporary, you know, filling, but then they're settling very quickly and they're, it, it's not, so I was just wondering if when they're, it, it's becoming that, I think. So I was just wondering if when they're, it's becoming that, I think. You know, you could get a flat tire and some. So I just didn't know if the plan, once they're finished with all the pipe work, are they then gonna come in? And I don't know if you can do it in cold weather in the winter or what the plan is for that.
I can follow up on that, but to my knowledge, I believe that's going to be happening, but I don't want to say for certain, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to recognize Alex McDonald on the overnight. So if any of you have tried to get through at Spring and Milburn, there are three separate construction projects going on in that intersection. Um so we have Verizon doing overhead work. We have the gas work, and then we have um various services going into the former Wells Fargo site, uh which is is almost complete. So three separate crews doing three separate projects all at once. Um we've been liaising with the businesses uh when there's going to be street closures. Um but it got to the point where Alex and I felt that it was no longer feasible to have those three crews working at the same time. Alex uh reached out to PSENG and asked them if they can do night work. Um and so they agreed to, and we think it's going to be a real great benefit to the businesses that are over there. Um and so Alex uh really stepped up to the plate on that, and hopefully that's going to alleviate a lot of the issues now that uh, because the Verizon work is mainly overhead. Um and so there's not a huge disruption when you put all three together, it's a little challenging. But he deserves kudos on that.
Do we have an ETA for Wells Fargo uh occupancy or do we?
I I wouldn't be confident saying anything about occupancy, but um they they have, I mean, if you've driven by, uh it is, the facades are all in. The commercial space is all in. Um it it looks really, really good. And they're putting in curbing sidewalks. Um and so it's it's moving along quite well. Um you know, hopefully.
Spring.
Yeah, hopefully, I don't know if I'd say spring, but.
Summer.
Maybe summer and um. We do have, they've been a very good crew to work with. Um I work with the construction manager uh quite a bit there. They communicated to the businesses when there's going to be closures. Uh police presence has been good in terms of traffic management. So um overall, that's been a very good partnership between the developer and and the township.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper, any any remarks?
I have no report to the C P.
Okay. Moving along. Ms. Dean, twenty-twenty-four Restaurant Week.
Okay, um I will skip around. All right, Restaurant Week. So uh this will be our second year, and it's March seventeenth to March twenty-third. That's the bye week of the Maple Mill Playhouse, so it helps bring people in. We're having a kickoff meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, uh at Opportunity Project. I think a lot of you remember, we partnered with them last year. They um provide services for people with brain injuries. And so we're partnering with them again, and they're actually going to host us next week. Uh we're combining that with our first advisory committee meeting. And so the focus is going to be Restaurant Week. Um and at this point, I've got. I have at least eighteen people that are going to attend. I think we're going to get closer to twenty-five, so it'll be really good. With Opportunity Project, just a brief overview of how we're going to collaborate this year, um besides promoting their services. Last year, it worked out well. They were able to get volunteer opportunities for some of their members, um like hostessing and things like that. Uh there's going to be, there were donations last year to Opportunity Project, so we'll encourage that with the business community. The new initiative they're doing is they're going to be putting out uh to people that uh agree to it. You know those kind of coin collection boxes at Wawa or whatever? So they're going to put those out with participating businesses to try and generate um awareness and and donations. And um we're also going to work with uh restaurants and eateries to have flyers about Opportunity Project, put in the to-go and and delivery bags. Um so all of that is kind of underway. And then, just see, uh the the themes I'm recommending for this year, and we're we're going to discuss it at the advisory committee meeting, is to have it be much more experience-focused. So an example would be having like an opera singer or someone's, you know, sing a song or two every half hour during dinner or have uh dinner and a movie where you have like a Roman Holiday up on the wall while you're eating, that kind of thing. So I've been looking into a lot of different options to recommend to restaurants um to to make it a unique experience. Um I'm also recommending um as far as what's offered, flights, uh prefix and tastings. And then we will be announcing uh sponsorship opportunities in the next uh week or so. But so far, there's a lot of enthusiasm for it. We're really excited. Uh if anyone has any questions at this point.
I have just a couple. How many, how many participants do you know that we had last year?
We had about thirty last year.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
So um what I'm trying to do is just tighten it up and and get feedback as to how we can improve our processes. And uh make sure, try and also improve, we're bringing people in to eat, but to those connections with the rest of the shops and services.
Right, those cross pollination, yes.
Shops, that kind of thing. So that's what, the other reason we wanted to have this with the advisory committee, because it's such a combination of different businesses in town. Um, yeah.
Uh and you'll be, you'll be pushing out all that that information to that master list of on Explorer was what, three thousand, thirty-five?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Then once I just, I want to get some concrete information uh from this meeting, and then I'll be sending out a save the date.
Great.
Yeah.
And then, are you going to be using those influencers again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was, that was, that was very valuable.
I was going to ask you.
Yes, they were, she, well, I I spent some time speaking. I can't remember her name though, but. Jessica Eath?
Yes.
Jessica, she's great. Jessica Chews, right.
No, she was terrific. I mean, we may hire her at Splurge, but but it feels like we had really good success.
We're actually planning on hiring her to do a social media tutorial.
Yeah.
For businesses.
Perfect.
She's, and she's local. She actually works in Shore Hills.
Yeah.
Her day job, but she's not.
Southern Bees.
An Instagram influencer.
Yeah, we're just working out the details for for that, which I'll report on probably at the next meeting. Um the the thing that I really want to get out of this meeting as well is, some of the restaurants expressed that we didn't really equally represent everyone with the influencers. So I just want to make sure that we're really um cognizant of that this year, that everyone's getting a little love from that. So um so those are the kinds of things that we want to tweak.
I think, I think there was a challenge, you know, all the influencers want to go to certain places.
Right.
Right? Because they're, those are the location they think are going to get them the most views. So we have to curate them a bit and say, not everybody can go to the standard. You know, you, we have to switch things up. So.
Right.
We'll have to crack the whip a little bit harder this year.
Yeah, but I I think it, last year, that was our big success for the week was the uh social media attention, so we're going to build on that. Okay.
You pull up the media.
So. All right, so the Metropolitan, um which is owned by Garden Communities, and actually Garden Communities has their headquarters on Mars Turnpike. So they're in the Cid. Uh we've been working with them, I think it's since the summer. And um it's just been a phenomenal partnership with them. So I had put out kind of a preview of opportunities in the fall, and then we got busy with the holidays. So I just sent this out again. This, I don't know if you can click through this, um Tim, but I'll briefly say, so the opportunities that we have discussed that uh they're open to doing is allowing us to put um promotional uh like coupons and things like that in the welcome bags for the new residents, uh promotional items, uh you know, whether that's, so this would, you know, be an example here. You can go to the next one. So um you know, a jar opener or matches or something like that. Um you know, businesses are welcome to produce and have included. Um they've offered that, uh it has to be pre-approved, but they will promote businesses in their leasing office. So if it's mattresses, mattresses or some other things that you would need moving in, um they are wel- welcome to do that. They they're welcome to that opportunity. Um also, uh what's the next one? Uh they can do um pop-ups and set up tables in the lobbies, whether it's giving out samples or promotions of your, you know, say you have a fitness place or something like that. Um they are open to that as well. And uh special services. So if it's a special dry cleaning, pick-up, drop-off, whatever that is, um they will uh promote those as well. And also, if people want to do, uh you know, like large gifts or perishable gifts, they've agreed to um give those out to the residents in batches. So say they get about twenty-five move-ins, then they'll go and and give those to people if if that's what um some of the business businesses submit. Um so the deadline to let us know you want to participate is February first. And then um we're working on ge- getting these things together, because they have to go in the bags for uh April first move-ins. Um so it's, it's really been awesome. Um I've been getting a great response um from the businesses so far. And we're going to keep reminding everyone every week um and do some follow-up. But uh, yeah, that's the big one. And then I also asked them if they, we want to do this Upper Milburn Ave Day um in August. And I asked if they'd like to collaborate, and they were, you know, immediately, yes, they're just figuring out how, but they are glad to partner with us. Um so it's just, it's just been great. I think this is a relationship that's going to continue, and we're all going to benefit from it. Uh any questions?
Yeah, Amanda, the slides you just showed as different ideas for engagement, is that, did that go out by email or do you have paper? Oh, that, those idea, okay, perfect.
And we're going to be repeating those.
And I'm going to, I'll do a reel as well.
Creative to like get people thinking about how, and another question, do you know, I mean, just, are we competing with Springfield? And or are they just solely responding and supporting us?
I don't know if you've heard anything from Springfield. They haven't mentioned Springfield to me at all.
Yes, Springfield uh.
Well, their directorship is uh is in flux.
They just hired a new director.
Okay.
Um so there's some onboarding there, but I think we are definitely ahead of the curve.
Well, and and we're.
And our proximity, I mean.
That's the thing, they're they're facing Shore Hills.
Right.
And so they're going to be walking to all of the businesses that exist and the businesses that are coming in.
Right.
I think the people that they're bringing to that area of town are going to really help grow the avenue.
Are we, are we also going to give them this goody bag in an Explorer bag?
Yes.
That says, Explore Milburn welcomes the metro, or something that's welcomed. And then, and then use that as a template hopefully for Wells Fargo. And as, as all these um new uh residents come in, with, it's an opportunity to 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 replicate this as we move forward along the calendar.
Yes, so this is going to be the first, I I want to say, maybe pilot of it. Um what we've asked is people that want to submit coupons, they need to be a five-by-seven or smaller. We're going to have an Explorer envelope. All of those are going to go in, and it's a welcome from Explorer. So then we just drop that in those bags. Um and then we're also going to do a um a small version of the business directory to go in there as well.
Right.
Because they had expressed interest in that. People are new to town, you know, they can flip through that sort of thing. So we'll, you know, we'll see how it goes and um and then we can open it up to other projects, like you said.
Right, I think that's great.
Been reaching out to the businesses, what, what through email?
Yeah, we just really started pushing it now. Um and I'm going to do some social media posts and also just some follow-ups. Um especially with the businesses on Upper Milburn Ave, that area, because this, this is such close proximity. So but so far, we've been getting participation from from throughout the the Cid.
I was going to say the same thing, is that for those businesses, for you know, Taste Buddy, Tonino's, Enzo's, uh Lobster Shack, all those guys that have seemed to be maybe lost a little bit. I mean, what a great opportunity open your doors and invite them in. I mean, uh you know, this is where that really starts to shine. Uh so as much as you can do with those businesses to engage, I think it's a great opportunity for those folks. And I'm sure you're going to be over there.
They already told me.
I think this is the day that Upper Milburn Avenue has waited for, you know, ever since they decided to go forward with that plan. So um Amanda's working on this for six months and uh, you know, had has built a great rapport with the Metropolitan. And I think we're first in the door. I I doubt that even Springfield has uh even considered doing this, so.
And we're, Explorer is the liaison for the city. So they don't want five hundred businesses coming at them. So that's where we're able to funnel things in, provide it to them.
And provide an exceptional um comprehensive service, if you will.
Yeah, and and the Bagel Pantry as well. Are they part of Explorer?
Oh, yeah, that that is.
In Medez over there, so that's.
Every single business on that, on Upper Milburn Avenue is within the Cid.
Except for like.
For the side where.
The garden.
The the actual Metropolitan is.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
The both sides are.
Well, that's great news. So please keep us.
We're really excited. I mean, this is why we're here.
So one question about, so I happen to live in Glenwood, and that light, that the new light that's right by the main entrance.
That's a, a baltus drum.
Yeah.
Baltus drum, and and you know, it's not timed correctly even now, because it there, if you can get backups. And I know we may not be in charge of like the timing, but I hope that, you said move-in starts March one?
They already had move-ins.
Oh, they have.
Both of them are going to start happening.
So so go into S D L, the uh the portal, S D L, and put that report in there. The more reports that go in.
Okay.
The more.
Because Essex County that has.
Oh, Essex County.
And though, but but Alex will get it to Essex County.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
No, that's just great. Maybe, maybe, maybe at some point.
Yeah.
We can look at what this goody bag kind of looks like.
Yeah.
At a meeting.
You just want a free goody bag.
Yeah, well, that's true.
So what I, what what I think you should do, and and you know, coming from a business background, as we all do, is I would like to see a K P I, a performance index that says, you know, here's what was done, here's the money that was spent. And if we can, some type of tracking or some type of feedback or some type of uh you know, measurement of how successful this rollout was was, you know, for everyone, for Tonino's, for Taste Buddies, for Enzo's, for uh the Lobster Shack, everyone. And you know, how many of these coupons were used? How many were, you know?
How many was, well, that that would probably be easy, because how many were, how many were produced? How many were distributed? And how many did you get back?
Coupons twenty percent off, whatever the coupons are, you're going to be able to track them.
It's a good idea.
And see and see and actually see the power of Explorer and and that it's really bringing value. Because there's going to be a, what, the Metropolitan, how many residences is it?
Um, I have it on.
Two.
You know, a hundred and twenty.
Yes, two hundred and seventy-seven units total. It's a hundred and seventy-seven townhomes and a hundred and eighty, right? Jeff, do you remember?
On the email.
I might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would make it a requirement, not a requirement, but I would ask the vendors who are participating to track it.
Yeah.
And then you can have a good, a good business case. You can make a, you know, a nice business case out of it and kind of tip your hat, hang your hat on it. And if it doesn't work.
Maybe as an easy collection, like, I don't know if our website, we could have a little thing to report. So Splurge, I don't know, weekly, monthly, at some point, we could just let you know, hey, we got fifteen of these coupons back or used or something. Just so you get for data collection.
Yeah, and as Amanda said, this is a litmus test for the other developments that are going to come online. So um we certainly, I think, can have good lessons learned, because nobody knows. This is unprecedented, right?
Right, right.
Um and so.
Oh, well, yeah, but what is good is you're captive audience too. You're right there. It's captive.
And we can fix our mistakes or improve, you know, with the future sites.
Yeah, and I and I'd be getting the coupons from uh the boxcar too. I mean, because, you know, a lot of people are going to be walking up that uh hill to the to the.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's an easy walk, yeah.
I like, I also think they're going to have a it it a shuttle to, a journey, a shuttle to the train station. Great, okay, well, we'll we'll wait enthusiastically for all information related to the Metropolitan. Okay, I'm I'm going to continue. Did you have anything else? I'm sorry.
I I'll have stuff after you. You want to come founding day?
Sure. So we had our kickoff founding day meeting on uh this past Wednesday. And I think with not only the cultural engagement members, but the other community partners, including art advisory, uh Board of Ed, um uh uh environmental commission, historic commission, Friends of the Library. We really had a very large um turnout, and I was very grateful for everyone's participation. So what we are doing last year, we had a founding day celebration in Taylor Park. And five years ago, we did something that was called Mill Wheels Rolling Into Milburn. So.
There it is.
There it is, okay. So that was the wheel that the uh Greenwood Gardens, what we did five years ago, we invited twenty-plus civic organizations to decorate a wheel. We had the wheels along Milburn, uh sorry, along Main Street for several weeks. And it was extremely well-received. Uh many thanks to the DPW that had built stanchions for these wheels so that they were really operational and could turn. It was a big hit uh with children. It was a wonderful day. And we want to recreate and elevate that enthusiasm for the town this year in our very own Taylor Park. On uh May eighteenth will be the day. Taylor Park is celebrating a hundredth birthday. It is iconic. It is one of our gems. One, one hundred, one hundred, yeah, yeah.
We kept telling ourselves it was one fifty.
And then we got the, yeah, yeah.
Can remember why we thought it was one fifty. Can remember why we thought it was one fifty, but it's a hundred.
The one sixty-seven, the house.
Somebody said one fifty and it got stuck in our head, it's a hundred.
So um so now we've we've expanded um our outreach. Where we're putting the wheels basically into four categories. Um. Cultural and Steve, I didn't bring my notes, cultural engagement.
They're in that printout I gave you, yeah. That last page.
Thank you. Yep, so we have historic and civic, those will be blue wheels. The environmental wheels will be predominantly green, education, culture and arts will be white. And the community organizations will be either rainbow or a color of choice. So we we're moving along, we've got thirty-two on the list so far, we're waiting for um. Today, the email went out to the thirty-two organizations that we earmarked for their participation. Um we've got twenty wheels in storage that are gonna be refurbished. Um there's two, if anybody wants to look at the library and see it in action, there are two wheels that are inside the library. So Amanda is working very, we're we're working very closely with Explorer, CETA. Um environmental commission has said that they wanna move their Earth Day, April twenty-eighth, and kinda wrap into this day. For a variety of activities and um once we get these wheel uh. Um uh commitments from these organizations, then we'll move to the design phase. And Michael Cooper is gonna uh assist us with that, he did All Together Now, that's in Taylor Park. He's also the uh the artist that's working to restore the iconic postcard greetings. Greetings from uh Milburn Short Hills and.
So you're looking at Vicky, what do you think she cares?
Vicky, cause it's, I know that's a project close to her heart and um. And she appreciates the progress, so uh or the restoration, I should say. So we'll be all, that is, that is all happening, um. I I uh I would encourage anybody that has the organization that can share the this list with you. Um if uh to take a look, but I think it's gonna be an exciting day and what what also I think is wonderful is that. Uh Explorers had a um a very serious commitment to permanent art throughout the town. And this go around, we're gonna be very cognizant about creating the wheels that will be sustainable. Over longer periods of time, they are wooden, they were made by the Amish uh craftsmen out in uh Lancaster County. And working with Michael Cooper, we're gonna, we're gonna design them and decorate them, so they'll be more sustainable, so like other communities. Had those cows or um so this, the Mill Wheel will be our sort of symbol, it's, you know, what Milburn was founded on. So we're working to get these, sort of elevate the project and then distribute them once completed throughout the five districts. So it's kinda, it's really a joint venture with a a variety of groups. Um I'm really excited about it and I want you all to mark your calendars for May eighteenth. And if you have any organizations that you know would wanna participate, um I mentioned a couple, Town Beautification League, Shade Tree. Um Harturn Arboretum, these are, Papermill is also taking a a leader, they they have a new uh director and marketing communications. He's um that we've, we met with him, Cody Andrews, I believe.
Yeah.
Um seems very jazzed about the project, so he's um so we're all excited, we think this'll be great for our businesses. Um and great for our residents and I hope it'll be a wonderful sunny spring day.
I was gonna ask, is there, is there a rainy?
Yeah, the next day is the rainy day, the nineteenth, so um. Let's hope, and 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 the weekend falls between Mother's Day and Memorial Day, so um. Just putting it out there.
Okay. Okay, um alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um so as far as uh the, I have just a couple other things, um. The Essex County Public Art Program, we've uh received a grant again, Stephen applied for it for two thousand twenty-four. Um the grant, uh the money from Essex is split. Um three thousand of it is for staffing and three thousand four hundred and sixty is for artist installation. And then there's a required match uh by Explorer. Um for twenty-five hundred for staffing and twenty-five hundred for installation. So the total budget for the Essex County Public Art Program is eleven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Um the potential projects for two thousand twenty-four, one of the main ones is gonna be supporting the uh Mill Wheel Project. Um as a public art program, uh we have one more installation that didn't get done last year, it's a, at Short Hill Station, that. Um style and canine mural there, we're gonna create plaques to put by all of the public art pieces in town. Um with, you know, the dates, artists and things like that. Uh we do have a public art directly, a directory and trail on our website, but it um it's gonna be updated and enhanced, there's. Additional uh public art pieces that need to go there, we wanna work on the experience, the user experience and then. Um I'll be working on additional grant applications for two thousand twenty-five and planning for two thousand twenty-five. Um the only, the other thing which Jackie brought up is that the ongoing maintenance for the postcard mural. Um again, Michael Cooper, who's been a great uh partner for us, um gave us a proposal, does everyone have?
No.
Okay, so it's a proposal for two thousand twenty-four um for a spring and autumn restoration of. Uh recommendations and uh to repair um as needed. Um and then um to put a uh recommended clear coat on there um for the year. And uh so that's just, this is just for one year, the um estimate is for uh one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And so this needs to be approved um by our board, uh is there anything else you wanna add, Scott?
Um yeah, so this this money will come out of the Essex County Grant, so it's not out of uh Explorers uh budget from the the assessment, so. Um we know that this, that the postcard does get beat up, um I think it's partly because of the way it was originally installed.
Yeah.
Um but this is minor yet important maintenance. Um and so this was a discussion we had last year, the board had instructed me to go out and solicit from Mr. Cooper a proposal. Um and I feel the the price and given that we have the funding source this year, that we should proceed with it, so. Um unless there's any questions, I I'd like a formal motion to do so.
Uh I'd like to make them a move forward a motion to uh to for payment to Michael Cooper. For the restoration, for the continued uh project restoration or maintenance, if you will, of the. Postcard Greetings From Milburn Short Hills for the year twenty twenty-four, which will be paid in two installments.
Yeah, I'd like to just, maybe we could amend that to authorize me to engage in a contract.
Okay, we'd like to uh, we'd like to make a motion to authorize Steve Grillo to get, engage in a contract with Michael Cooper. For the restoration and maintenance of Greetings From Milburn Short Hills postcard mural, may I have a second?
Sure, not to exceed amount or?
Not to exceed thirteen fifty for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. May I have, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Right, um roll call or voice vote?
Roll call, okay.
Alexa Clark.
Yes.
Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben Stoller.
Yes.
Steven Weiner.
Yes.
Our motion carries four nothing, thank you.
You did say, that's annual though, right? That that's like, it'll last about a year, okay, okay.
We can reevaluate that at the end of next, at the end of this year.
And then, and then the amount of the twenty twenty-four Essex County Public Art, that seemed to go, did that go up from last year to this year?
It went down maybe, maybe nine hundred dollars or something like that.
Down, okay, cause that was, okay, got it.
Um I think last year. Yeah, last year, I think we were at seventy-eight hundred, so maybe something, yeah, maybe went down a thousand dollars or so.
Okay.
Um it's it's really based on how many applications they get and. Uh you know, they only have so much money to spread around, but I still think, you know, that amount of money is really solid, that's gonna allow us to do. Um all of the prep work that Jackie described for the Mill Wheels, um and then some of these other projects, so I think we'll have a very. Robust public art project with the only cost to the bid being the obligation we have for matching funds.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I just wanna, we have one more thing, the advisory committee?
Yes.
Um so I'm gonna just do a brief introduction, um so as you guys know, we do not appoint our board of directors, however, we do appoint. The advisory board, um that is a board that is supposed to be approximately fifteen people, but if we have more people that wanna participate. We certainly aren't going to turn them away, um we have been gradually expanding that board over the last few years and this year. Uh we have the largest number of people who've expressed interest with twenty-four, um and so we have some holdovers from last year. Uh we have some new people that have either joined late uh in twenty twenty-three or expressed interest in joining for twenty-four. And then we also um offered uh this to some of the folks who had applied to be on the board. But were ineligible or not selected, so wanted to give them an opportunity to serve, even though we have a limited number of seats on this board, so. That's how we get to that twenty-four number, um you guys will have to take formal action to just approve this slate. But Amanda's gonna talk about some of the expansion improvements for this year.
Yeah, um so I'll be taking the staffing lead with the advisory committee. Um the the nice thing about this um is we're gonna have residents on this now, which I think will be interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Um provide another um viewpoint uh with us. Um as far as we we've expanded, we now have um Viv Infusions. Um which is above uh the standard, they're gonna be on the board. Um Rob from Game Changer Fitness, which is a new business on uh Morris Turnpike, uh he has joined us. And then we have um a handful of invitations that are still out that we're hoping will join and they're from. Um a variety of places in the Sid, uh Upper Milburn Ave. Um I think it was uh Morris Turnpike and a few others. Um so we, as of today, have seventeen commitments and the majority of them are gonna be at the meeting next week. And uh hopefully we'll have a few more come in, um. But uh I'm looking to use the advisory committee to have a focus for each one and then kind of a new business section, so. Um we can really utilize everyone's experience and um ideas and and also concerns about things, so. We're gonna start that with Restaurant Week and then we'll move forward with the other three meetings throughout the year.
And uh you know, this is something that you guys don't necessarily see, because it's not something you typically attend, but it's a great board of a really diverse group of people. Um from a volunteer perspective, they give us great feedback on events, on promotions we're doing, they gave us. Well, Jackie was at the meeting where we talked about Black Friday versus Small Business Saturday, et cetera, it's a very good sounding board. Then we also have our Girls Night Out Committee, which is separate to that, so um you know, at this point, we're looking at. Probably over thirty-something volunteers, um and then we had the Key Club. Uh helping us with the Winter Villages this year and anybody that was there saw that we, they came out like an army.
Yeah.
Um so, you know, it takes time to establish rapport with volunteers, uh but we're very, very happy with where we are right now, uh so.
Yeah, and also, I didn't mean to interrupt, they also wanted to mention that it came out of the advisory committee with some of the lighting suggestions. And some of the safety requirements that to just safeguarding businesses, I I think that that information was was. Appreciated and very valuable um moving forward, so, thank you, I'm sorry, didn't mean to.
No, so could I just, unless anybody has a comment, Steven, you wanna say?
No.
Oh, then um if I could have a motion to approve the uh slate as shown in attachment six.
Sure, yeah, I I moved that the list of candidates in attachment six be approved as members of the advisory board.
I I'll second that.
Alright, roll call vote, Alexa Clark. Jackie Lieberberg.
Yes.
Ben Stoller.
Attachment six.
He's been, he's diligently going through it.
Yes.
And Steven Weiner.
Yes.
Alright, very good, and as you guys know, that list uh changes throughout the year, if we have more people that express interest, we obviously. Invite them to participate as well, but this is our starting point, but I think having twenty-four on the list to start is. Alright. My report. A bunch of stuff to cover, um and then I just wanna go to an open discussion for two items that I'd like us to talk about. Um and then potentially refer to Ben to bring back to the Township Committee, so. Um just some recaps, uh Ben uh mentioned this earlier, January ninth into tenth, uh we had a pretty significant uh storm concern. Um myself, Tim, Alex McDonald, um the other folks that are involved in a first response in OEM, we're on calls constantly. Um we prepared uh social media and email blast content starting on Sunday. Um Amanda and I went and personally checked in on sixty businesses um around the the Rahway River area, that was where we were expecting. Uh the majority of the concern, um Public Works had gone out and cleared out a lot of catch basins. Um they had trenched out portions of the riverbank, uh riverbank, and so. Uh we had them, we we personally uh suggested dropping sandbags in the art alley. Um Public Works brought out two pallets of about a hundred sandbags, um and so the businesses that were right near. Um the the art alley got those, because I guess it was only a week or two prior, um there was another flood event where. Uh the river got to probably about an inch from breaching, um and so Alex and I were very concerned about that specific area. Uh luckily, we didn't have any issues, but I can tell you uh from Amanda and I going into these businesses and. Um I went into basements, I was checking for any areas of vulnerability, um. A lot of folks said we learned our lesson from Ida, um you know, we listened to you guys when they told us. Lift your technology out of the basement, make sure things are elevated, um clean out gutters, make sure that storm drains are clear behind the buildings. Um and so really, there was very little to do, um which was great, you know, we went, we visited these folks and. Um overall, I think everybody learned their lesson and they were prepared quite well, so, uh we also distributed the. The now twenty twenty-four version of our hurricane preparedness kit, so we've been doing that since twenty-one. That's available on our website, we handed out paper copies, we shared that via social media and email. Um that gives a whole host of things of of ways to prepare the exterior and interior of your business, um also to have. Uh certain items for preparation, but overall, um it was a great effort by, I think, everybody involved, including the business owners.
Um we've, we've essentially calling it a flood document at this point, because it's not hurricane season, but we're starting to have these issues year round. The other thing I really wanna thank DPW, they um had a self-serve area to make your own sandbags. So when we were going around to people, um we were telling them about that and while we were making rounds, we're already seeing them coming back with their sandbags, so. They kept that open late since they were here late, I think it made a real impact, so. Another example of how this town works together.
It was, it's corny, but it was great teamwork, uh it really was, everybody pulled together on that one. Um.
Nobody got sandbagged.
No one was sandbagged during the sandbag experience, but um the DPW process of having, maybe you could talk about it, obviously, we didn't, we were busy doing other things, but. Um how was it for you as a business owner to go and get the sandbags?
Um.
Cause if it was not so great, let us know.
No, it was great, like when I went there, there was about four other women um packing sandbags. I I believe they were all residents, um and they all helped, we all helped each other bring it to their cars, it was a great. I mean, it was hard work.
Did you fill it manually?
Yeah.
Cause my understanding, and I don't know what was happening that particular day, is that the town does have a sandbag filler. Um and so you, it's supposed to get all this stuff done a lot quicker, and so. Um I think the town employed that, at least for a portion of the day, but it's a good little piece of equipment. Apparently you didn't get the benefit of it, but.
Just shuttles, yeah, yeah, it was great.
Um Premier Creative, um so a, as you guys know, one of the central things that we do as an organization is business education programming. Um that's part of the the grants and the in-kind services that I talked about earlier. Um so Premier Creative was the first uh event of the year, that was uh back on January eleventh in this room. And uh Premier is a uh, they're located right above the Charles Schwab uh here in downtown, they've been here for about twenty-five years. Um and they are.
The owner's name.
JJ Abbott, um and he had volunteered his time to come in and talk about Google search results. Um and so we had fifteen people representing twelve businesses, we did a lunch and learn. And uh it was a great hour, hour fifteen minute conversation, um Stephen's wife attended. Um we had representation for most of the districts and uh there's a couple people that ate, that JJ did end up following up with, um who potentially need. Um some more in-depth services, but um it's a great discussion on what search engine optimization is. Uh we did hands-on, we actually Googled businesses in different ways to find out what actually pops up. Um depending on what, if you use geography, if you use the specific name of the business, if you use an address, and so everybody was able to see. Uh what their Google search results look like based on variable entries. Um that leads into, we have a session planned for March seventh at nine thirty AM via Zoom. Um that leads into, we have a session planned for March seventh at nine thirty AM via Zoom. Um you wanted me to talk about the NJEDA e-commerce program. So this is the second time that we're doing that with David Sorkin from New Frontier, a local business owner. He's located above the standard. Um he is one of the dozen or so vendors statewide who have a contract to provide free website, either creation or upgrades. Um so thus far, we we did, we've we've talked about this quite a bit and then we did a webinar in the fall where David was able to talk about the program. Um thus far, Lastrada, The Standard, Taste Buddy, Easy Print, Oxford Jewelers, Goldbergs, and Coffee Mill Roasters. Um have either all uh received a new website or in the process of receiving a new website that is completely free. Um so we're gonna continue to push this. I tell people. It's crazy if you don't do it. Um it's free. Um and the state also will cover your website hosting for two years, the cost. So. Um we have. Um so David Sorkin is gonna be speaking about that on March seventh. And then we also have as a a webinar on February twenty first with the NJEDA, which is the entity that. Funds this program. They're gonna be talking about small business capital grants. So they have three separate programs that small businesses uh like all here in Milburn are eligible for. If you're interested in rehabbing your your building, expanding, uh putting in capital improvements. So they're gonna go over those three programs in detail. We would, we're certainly encouraging some of our businesses to use those state resources. Um the grants are available. The EDA is is willing to work with people, so we wanna certainly uh host these events um and and bring them. Um bring the that to the forefront. So those are the three education programs we have ongoing. Um I wanna talk a little bit, there's an update on liquor license reform. I think at our, this, maybe it was our November meeting. Uh we did talk about that there was legislation um that was, had been sent to the governor concerning liquor license reform. Uh he issued a conditional veto, sent it back to the Senate, wanted some uh other uh changes. And uh overall, I just wanna go through it. It's it's not. I think from a, from a Sid perspective, um we're disappointed uh with the the final view of the bill and I've spoken to um. Many of my colleagues as well as uh the downtown New Jersey folks and. Um I think this bill underperforms what we were looking for, but I wanna make you guys aware. Um the first thing it does is it um. It allows transfers of liquor licenses between municipalities. Um the municipality has to be contiguous to the other municipality. Um however, the one challenge is if if Springfield wanted to sell a license that it has. And Milburn wanted to buy it, we'd have to still come up with the money to cover the cost, which could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um and so there's budget issues and there's, there's.
Wait, the municipality can buy another?
The munis- so Milburn Township would have to buy the liquor license from Springfield and then could sell it to a restaurant. We.
But the municipality isn't the holder of the license, it's the, it's the establishment.
Well, but that liquor license has to get to the town somehow.
The establishment.
Right? So right now, Milburn doesn't have any liquor licenses to give. It's based on population.
Right, right.
So if we wanted to get one, let's say Springfield was selling, it's all hypothetical. Let's say Springfield was selling one and they wanted to sell it for nine hundred thousand dollars. We could buy it because we're a contiguous town, but we'd have to come up with the nine hundred thousand dollars to pay for it. And we'd have to, obviously, it's public money. We'd wanna ensure that there was someone willing to buy it for that much or more. So it's a legitimate challenge. I mean, it it, yes, it. It creates something new, but it's not an ideal option because there's a lot of perks to it.
But but it, I, but I, okay, so I'm in Springfield. I am China Sky Restaurant in uh Jeff.
Doesn't exist anymore.
I know, all right, I'm making it up, Jeff. Bear with me. China Sky Restaurant in uh in 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 Springfield.
Yeah.
I would have to sell my license to Springfield.
Or it could be a pocket license. Um so an un- an inactive license, which is also part of this. Um there's gonna be.
But the, but the municipality doesn't own the license. It's the business that owns the license. So you'd have to.
Right, but a business, right, couldn't sell it to a business in another town. Right?
If 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 I could, so my understanding, um I I um, so a couple of caveats. Um I'm familiar with legislation. I have not read the legislation myself, but I I have uh talking uh to some interested parties. Um my understanding with respect to the pocket license issue is that uh a business in one municipality can. Potentially sell it to another business in a contiguous mi- municipality, but that transfer is gonna require the approval of the governing bodies of both municipalities.
I think that's one part of it. And then there's that second part, yeah, where the township could buy it.
It it, yeah, that, no, I'm I'm not saying to the exclusion of the first instance that you were describing.
Yeah.
But the second instance, uh there are a number of municipalities that have numerous pocket licenses, which are licenses that are just being held by owners. That aren't um otherwise attached to a physical premises. Uh my understanding is that they, pocket license holders have two years. Within which to find arrangements, uh well, actually to find a premise, uh otherwise they'll lose their pocket license.
Oh, that's good.
Um and and so.
This Short Hills Mall has several of them.
The the, the other, the other limitation in in the, and the, if I'm stealing your thunder or or interject it, just call me uh.
We'll get to that. No.
Um.
Please.
Uh my understanding is that um, uh however, there's also um uh windows within which uh there's a maximum. So. Uh if a minute, if a liquor license, a pocket license were transferred between two contiguous municipalities, uh there can only be one every two years. Um and then um so, so it's it's not what it, so um a municipality can't go and acquire three, four, five, six. Um pocket licenses from contiguous um municipalities.
But a municipality could make money in this? It seems like.
No, no, uh again, I'm I'm not talking about the, there is the municipality purchasing.
That's a.
A, an unissued license from an adjacent municipality, which I think is the first instance. The executive director was discussing, but at least in the pocket license scenario. A municipality can only approve so many licenses per time period. So you don't have a a sudden influx of many licenses into a municipality. Hopefully that helped.
There's also a a mall provision. Um and so it allows municipalities to issue up to two. Special consumption licenses within shopping malls of at least seven hundred fifty thousand gross square feet and four um in shopping malls of one point five million. Um so the original hope, and actually our former Assemblyman, now Senator John McKeon. Had introduced a legislation which obviously didn't make it through, um which would allow municipalities to essentially duplicate the licenses that are at malls. So there's five liquor licenses at the Short Hills Mall. They would have been able to keep those, but then we would have taken those five licenses and been able to use them. Um for mom and pop businesses all throughout the town. Um we thought as as the Sid and as the township, that that would obviously be a good thing. Um it didn't make it through as it went through the Senate. Um instead, um essentially what we're going to see is uh malls will now have the ability to get more liquor licenses than they already have. Um and 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 the editorial from from downtown New Jersey as they looked at this is. Um that uh, there's definitely uh some favoritism. Towards large corporate malls than there is towards uh small mom and pop restaurants. And so.
But it's supposed to be approved by the township.
Does. Um so it's supposed to give the normal process, but now in the Short Hills Mall could have four more liquor licenses, whereas the town cannot have any. Um so it's it's not, it certainly is not in favor of of improvement districts and and uh commercial districts. Um one thing we, that is, I think, very positive, and and Mr. Cooper alluded to this, is the the pocket license. I think there's. It's like fourteen hundred something inactive licenses throughout the state. Um and so the the state is now going to begin a process of cracking down on those. Um and they're creating what they call a use it or lose it provision for these inactive licenses. And the hope is that um throughout the state, these licenses will now be put back in circulation. So I I certainly would not consider this a success for improvement districts, um but it is definitely not a failure either.
All right, but all things being equal, that's better for the township than not. You know, we could, taking the bid out of it, having four more liquor licenses and driving traffic to a mall will. Inherently drive traffic to Milburn and enhance Milburn Township as a whole.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, just from from the bid's perspective, right? And that's obviously my job. So um I think. We gotta, it's a win, it's not a triumph.
Right.
Uh we certainly would have liked to had Assemblyman McKeon's bill or a provision made it. That would have brought five more liquor licenses to anywhere else in the town. Um not just the bid, but any surrounding parts of it. So. Um but I think anything that can be done in New Jersey to loosen liquor license, um liquor license provisions is a win. We've been waiting twenty five years for this. Um and so uh there's more to come, I hope. Um I hope the Murphy administration continues to take this seriously, but um. Or across New Jersey, it is gonna be an uphill battle to to make it easier. And um there is uh some improvements here to breweries as well.
I was gonna say, is there any kind of carve out for beer and wine other than as a, as a separate, I mean, that was dis- discussed.
Yeah, so the, so the, the brewery world, so we don't have a craft brewery here. Um but. One of the challenges that's come up is really through the restaurant lobby is they've made it very difficult for breweries to compete. They can't show live sports. They can't have. More than X amount of trivia nights. They can't have more than X amount of live music.
Or food.
Or food. Um and so this bill loosens a lot of those things, but it's, I I mean, it's kind of ironic. I th- I mean, really, the the law that went into place to allow breweries to really be competitive is like less than ten years old. And then they made it pretty strict and now they're loosening it again. So you've had sort of inaction, strictness, and now loosening all in the course of probably less than a decade. So I'll keep you guys posted if this comes up. Um quickly on new businesses, um Sushi Zero uh has opened. I know Ben has visited. What did you think?
Uh food is fantastic, presentation's fantastic, and they did an awesome build out.
You don't get to talk about sushi when you come to the TC meetings, but you get to talk about it.
True.
Where where is it?
Um.
It's the old JJ's uh next to Taylor Park. I was there.
The old Lee's Agent.
The old Lee's Agent, right, right.
Yeah, I was there too. I felt like I was in a New York chic. Uh yeah, it def- definitely has a a sophisticated vibe.
Looks great.
And the food was really good and I would encourage.
If, if you guys remember, I guess it was somewhat after Ida, um they had closed Lee's Agent.
Yeah.
Um and there was questions from this board, like what's gonna happen? I said, they're gonna create a one kitchen, two restaurant concept.
Mm hmm.
Um and they did uh the ramen. And then a couple of months later, they did Sushi Zero. So the the dream came to fruition and it's it's really a beautiful spot. They did a great job of it. Um Curious Kids is also opening this month. Um they've been a great partner of ours. Um that is for z- uh. Zero to five-year-old kids. Uh they have a whole bunch of different programs and uh they've got Mommy and Me, they have uh.
It's artistic based.
Yeah, it's a great program. They have an operation in Jersey City and they're actually, I think, closing up in Jersey City to move here, I think. Either way.
Uh yeah, they've been painting, they've been, it, they're very active. They were involved with uh sponsored, the Winter E-Blues, they handled the.
Are they located again?
It's gonna be on Spring Street. Uh JD Fitness had two locations. It's the small gray building. Right across from the municipal parking lot.
Got it.
Um they have a sign up now and everything. Um we did have uh one closure, as I mentioned, the the Sunoco, uh unfortunate circumstances. Um and Suburban Paint has been sold to Rossi Paint. Um so over on Main Street. Eight Main Street, if I recall. Um so I've been told that Rossi Paint will probably open up uh within the next month or so. And that's a fairly large Benjamin Moore dealer uh throughout northeast.
Suburban was there forever.
Yeah. I I I don't know the specifics. I don't know if if the owner retired or sold the business or how the exit strategy worked, but I know it was in the works for a while. Uh Rossi is a pretty large company in in New Jersey. Um and so I think, you know, we're losing one paint store to gain another and it was through a transaction. So. Um that was good. Um I do wanna talk about the Main Street designation. Um so. If you guys remember, back in late twenty twenty, early twenty twenty one. Explore had applied to become a New Jersey Main Street program.
Mm hmm.
We were denied the application because it is a requirement that you be a five oh one C three nonprofit. We had not received the nonprofit status at the time of application. The hope was that. You know, by the time they finished reviewing it, that the C three would come through and we'd get lucky. Obviously, that didn't happen. Uh we have had our C three status since September of twenty one, um and we've been patiently waiting for the state to release the Main Street program. They recently did. Um and so uh March fifteenth is the application deadline. Um I just wanna read a little bit about what the Main Street program is and tell you about some of the other communities that are in. So. It promotes economic development uh for business districts by providing training, technical assistance, and development of preservation-based revitalization initiatives. Um it strives to support the existing tax, uh to expand the existing tax base, increase sales, create a positive community image. Attractive businesses, create jobs, and increase investment. Um it is run through the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, DCA. Um and when, when you are approved as a Main Street community, you are then eligible for both state and federal grant funds. Uh for capacity building as well as capital programs. Um so a lot of the streetscaping and placemaking things we've talked about. Um we cannot apply to the state or the feds for Main Street money, uh because we're not a Main Street community. We would, if we're accepted, we would then be eligible. Um there are currently twenty five designated Main Streets in New Jersey. Um I looked at the map today just to confirm the nearby members. Um Bloomfield, Montclair, West Orange, South Orange, Summit, Westfield, and Matutian are all uh Main Street communities, so they are all eligible for this type of funding. Um and me and Matutian actually won um best Main Street in the United States last year. There were three winners from across the nation. Um Matutian won that award. So um they have, they have leveraged that funding um in terrific ways for public art and capital improvements. So. Um so that is the plan, is to uh apply for that grant and then hopefully we will. Receive it and it could open up tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars uh for Explore to do a lot of great work.
Steven, yeah, just mentioned, oh, sorry, Dan.
I was gonna, uh I remember it was a pretty significant uh application process. I remember reading a draft years ago. Right, have you started dra- it's due March fifteen. I mean, that's a lot of work.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a mandatory information session, um the twenty fifth of January. So um I'll be attending that and then. Um I'll start the application. We have, the application we did in twenty or twenty one. It's kind of useless now. I mean, obviously, the organization's very different than then. Um but you know, one of the tenants of Main Street is volunteerism, and so we're talking about, you know, how much volunteer engagement we've had. Um that's a really positive thing that we could talk about. Um some of the placemaking and public art projects, that's gonna lend into this cooperation with other groups. Uh like CETA, et cetera. So I think, I think we're gonna have a very strong application. Um you know, we don't know what's gonna happen, um but. Um I think this year we'll we'll put something together that's really good and hopefully, you know, we could potentially double our budget, you know, with grant funds. Um and and not have to worry about raising assessment or anything like that. So uh it'll be a great opportunity. Uh so I'll keep you posted on that. Um.
Could you just repeat the towns that are, that are in our?
Yes, Bloomfield, Montclair, West Orange, South Orange, Summit, Westfield, and Matutian. Those are the ones that are sort of in the immediate area.
So it's interesting. So Springfield is not um. Livingston is not, great. So this is, this is.
Cranford is not.
Right.
Chatham is not, yeah.
Madison.
Madison is.
Madison doesn't even have a bid. Right.
Correct.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
Okay, um then I don't wanna spend too much time on the next two things, but you guys know, and and Ben is obviously new to this, but um. We put together our annual success tracker. That's attachment seven. This is the list of all the things that Amanda and I intend to do this year. So this year, we've got eighty eight different projects, events, uh meetings, whatever it may be. Um so we spend, we start doing this list in August.
Yeah.
Um and then it's listed chronologically. Um we do have a lot going on um already. Um but we'll continue to provide this uh each meeting and I'll highlight. Um but thus far, um everything that we've needed to do to kickstart some of our. Uh business services programs have have already happened. And of course, um it's light on events now, but once we hit March, April, um then the event season starts.
And the X means completed.
The X means completed, yes.
Okay.
Um and then um Ben and I had a conversation about key performance indicators and. Um I think one of the challenges that we have as an organization is. Things just happen all the time, right? There's just, there's constant phone calls from people needing services and. Um and I wanted to quantify that and so um I created a document, you see it in attachment eight, and I I. I don't know if I'd call this scientific, but it's gonna be a tracking to see. What do we do by the end of the year? How many times do we get calls for navigating documents or requests for space or um? You know, how many times do we host a professional, or how many times do we attend professional development sessions? Um our social media is obviously key. I wanna track our growth. Um how many posts do we do? How many followers do we have? Uh how many digital campaigns do we do? Um events, certainly, but we wanna look at how many businesses participate. How many volunteers do we engage? How many sponsor, how much sponsor revenue do we get? Um last year with the Winter Villages, we had such a great. Um turnout with people visiting Milburn and Short Hills for the first time. I think the number was twenty percent of all people.
Yeah, yeah.
Had never been here before. That's a huge number. So we wanna track those things. Um and then, of course, how many educational classes we offer, how many people attend them? Um so at the end of the year, we can start to quantify these things. It's not necessarily that we're measuring it against anything. It's a question of. You know, where are there things that we can do, maybe not do, or how are we spending our resources? So. Um this is gonna be something that I'll present on a quarterly basis. It'll be broken down by month. Um, this is gonna be something that I'll present on a quarterly basis, it'll be broken down by month, um, and and we'll take it from there, but I think this is a good start in terms of data tracking.
And Steve, you should also include in terms of your time and the members' time in terms of supporting the township on things like flood mitigation, middle of the night, you're. You're you're running, you're you're running around, you know, Main Street.
Right.
Going over an avenue, you know, with sandbags, you know, I think that's pertinent also to.
Yeah, some reflect, like your visit, you you, somebody stopped by splurged.
Both of us, yeah.
Both of you did, really appreciated, Julie felt, I mean, it was very nice, and and it made us feel like.
Yeah.
What, you know, yes, what can we do anything, and we already had a whole team emptying our basement and bringing stuff out of it, but.
Right.
We should track that engagement, cuz that made.
Right. Or when you're working outside, or the signs or traffic, I mean, you know, I don't think people realize, you know, all the nuts and bolts.
Our business feel really good.
You know, uh, stuff that that you and Amanda have your hands in.
Yeah, a lot of that is also on the success tracker, um, and so, you know, I think, obviously, we we go over this at our workshop meeting in September and then our annual meeting in October, but. Cuz that's how we figure out our budget and our plan for the next year, but, um, this is a little bit more detailed and and I think it's a good way for us to, I mean, I've just been tracking. Parking passes have gone out, other, everybody has to get them, I've gotten a dozen phone calls already from businesses who need assistance trying to figure out their way through it, so. They call me, they don't call the tax collector's office, they call me, okay, but they want someone to pick up the phone and answer the question.
It's kind of constituency service bucket, right, kinda like an elected official, but the same way, when when you help get them the parking space.
It is. Hmm.
Those should be tracked somehow, cuz that's got value.
That's what we are tracking, yeah, so that's gonna be.
Okay, perfect, how about website metrics, do we, is that part of the reporting, that's in there?
We don't have webs.
Okay. Or like, like users, like how many give you.
We did social media.
Oh.
I meant like this explorer's website, like when we put out, we redo that.
We get to that, monthly hits.
I mean, we have, we have uh dates we need to.
Cuz it it helps inform how, whether the site needs to be redesigned or.
What I wanted to say is, is tracking all this is also gonna help us with grant applications, having all this information.
All this data analytics.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And and I think the big proponent of, like, the metropolitan rollouts, things along those, you get so much from those. Because if you could really, really. Pack those coupons and those welcome baskets and that reach to real economic value delivered to the businesses. That's a win-win for everyone, definitely for you, but really, it takes body and work. Los Losch, Shaq, Fernando, and uh and and it's, everybody in that upper Milburn stretch, but much past that, all the way down into to into town, everybody should purchase.
And a Moore's turnpike.
And and Moore's turnpike, yeah, AT&T, you move in, you wanna follow with the local number or something, so.
So with that, I wanna have an open discussion, um, obviously, we have Ben now as our township committee liaison, Ben. There's, there's been a number of times over the last three years where we've had issues that are beyond our scope, or we feel um need to be elevated to the TC, and so. Uh, we ask that you refer them for discussions, and the first one, um, this is not gonna come to shock to anyone, but. Um, what we've wanted to do is put together a holiday decor committee. There are a dozen different groups in town that all have different levels of funding or artistic vision. Um, we can do a much better job as a community, um, for holiday decor, um, the township has some lighting, probably needs to invest in some more. Um, we do obviously a large event, um, the Chamber did some lighting this year for the first time, which we hope they replicate again. Um, Township Beautification League does some reads, um, but I think if the township committee were to. Organize themselves and say, we wanna get any group that's interested to put together a plan, put together a potential budget, um. The township can invest in some of the hard infrastructure, um, if we go into the winter season knowing that certain groups are doing certain things in certain locations. Um, it won't just fall on the back of Explore, or the back of Public Works, or the Chamber doing one or two lighting installations, so. I think it does require the township committee to consider this, um. Empower Alex to put this committee together, uh of all the different groups, and ideally put some budget behind it, um, so. It's not our decision to do any of those things, but we talked about it at our November, December meetings, and I think we're all in agreement, um, but the formal. Action should really come from the TC, but we're certainly willing to play a a leadership role in that as as it's always.
Yeah, I mean, I I can't say a person, I've gotten calls from four or five different individuals in town who've been here for years. Uh, they've reached out directly and said, you know, in terms of beautification, holiday lights, and having a continuity of 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 decorations. Uh, across the town is very important to them, and I'll give you names, um, you you just volunteered to take the leadership on it, so. You're now taking.
You're gonna have to establish the committee first, then.
Well-established committee, but I I do agree, I mean, if you go around to other towns. Uh, and that come to mind, where you have the beautiful lights across the street, you have the candy cane, the candy cane uh light poles, et cetera. And the beautiful lights done by the Chamber of Commerce in the blue, and I guess that became a topic, why were they blue and white, et cetera, et cetera, but just a beautiful layout.
Yeah.
Uh, by the beautiful, by the clock, the 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 jeweler's clock, the the stone clock, which is beautiful. Um, you know, but there should be a continuity, have that throughout the town, uh, I'll certainly take the leadership at the TC role. And I'm certain that we can find some money and work with everyone to make that, you know, aspirational goal for for us and for the town to come through.
And and just so you know, what we typically do, and Amanda can speak to it if necessary, but, um, we do winter plantings, um, so. Uh, the vast majority of the forty planters that we maintain, we replant in for winter, um, we obviously have the Winter Villages, we wrap all of the um small. What kind of trees are they?
They're shrubs.
The shrubs.
They're like the holly.
The holly bushes, we wrap them with decor, um, but there's only so much that we can do versus, you know, if we had. A bunch of different groups that all bring great stuff, so we wanna work as a team.
Well, well, yeah, there's no real continuity, I mean, there's snowflakes here, there's snowflake there, different sizes, different shapes, different colors, different everything.
There's a one-armed, uh, you know, nutcracker somewhere, you know, it's, it's a little rough.
Pig lives up here, snowman down here, et cetera, so to have some continuity throughout the town, I I think would be good, and. You know, I was a big, a big supporter and, you know, bought a couple of the uh, the veteran flags, which I thought was a fantastic rollout by the, by uh. By Dan, Cam, and that group too, so, you know, there's a lot of things.
One thing I wanna say is I think this is also something that will be more inclusive, because. For instance, Diwali is usually the first or second week of November, our lights aren't up yet, and that's a holiday that's very much about light. So I think when you get the right people in this group, this is gonna be even even more than just the lighting, it's it's gonna be more about the community as well.
And then the second item I wanted to talk about is, um, and we're really trying to get ahead of this, I attended a seminar that was hosted by, um. The Borhee School at Rutgers, um, talking about e-bikes and e-scooters, and so actually Alexa had had brought this up, um. With the Metropolitan, with the former Wells Fargo, with Annie Says, we're gonna have a lot of locations that are. Not ideal to get to walk to transit, and so I think what we need to do is anticipate that. There may be an increase in e-bikes and e-scooters being used in the town, um, and so this was a a lecture simply about. Um, state law, about what types, I I didn't know there's actually three types of e-bikes, based on uh motor vehicle law. Um, and some of the challenges that other communities have faced, um, you know, we have to look at. What is our zoning or or some of our other, um, our law enforcement codes about riding on sidewalks, parking on sidewalks, um, infrastructure. Um, you know, if we're gonna have people that are biking to and from our transportation hubs, certainly we have Short Hill Station as as well as Milburn. You know, can they lock these bikes up safely, um, same thing with fire department and the building department, um, there's concerns about. Storage in buildings, about battery charging, um, these batteries are um inherently fairly safe. Until the user overcharges them or doesn't store them properly, um, and so, uh, and also potent, uh, potential conflicts with vehicles. And pedestrians, um, because they're bikes, but they're also motorized, it can go up to twenty miles an hour, and so, um, some of them you're allowed to travel on sidewalks. Um, some of them you're allowed to travel in bike lanes or on bike routes, um, and so. We as a community, I think, need to be prepared for potential conflicts, um, and so. It's something that I don't think the CID plays necessarily a regulatory role right at this point, but I think. With all the new development coming on and the idea that, you know, the train station is not that close, for instance, to Wells Fargo. I wouldn't be surprised if somebody did have a motorized scooter over there, so how do we deal with some of those issues? Um, and so that's something I wanted to at least start a conversation with the TC about, make you guys aware. Um, that this is something we are thinking about, but also that the Borhee Center at Rutgers, um, put on a great webinar and they do have really good resources. And so that if it's something that, you know, you guys wanna tackle.
Well, I I, I think the TC is abundantly aware of the dangers of the scooters and the bikes, I mean. Right now, trying to ride, uh, I I've almost been hit multiple times by teenagers or, you know, pre-teens on 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 bikes. Flying thirty miles an hour, fifteen miles an hour, it seems like thirty miles an hour.
Spent on the sidewalk.
You know, on the sidewalk.
Right.
Uh, and we don't have the bike lanes as well, and. You know, it's it's, uh, as Steve knows, and back in Glenwood, and then even in the, uh, in the Wyoming section and such, the sidewalks aren't so great. There's dips and there's missing sidewalk pieces and holes, that, you know, it is fairly dangerous as well, uh, and, uh. You know, I think it is something that we have to look at and, uh, and understand, you know, how you roll it out, um, you know, most of the rental. Really called the rental Uber, Uber bikes and.
City bikes.
City bike and things along those lines, and suit city scooter, et cetera, are are more in flat, flat lands with. Nice bike lanes and continued sidewalks, higher density, you know, the university areas, or New York that has the bike lanes and such, so. We just have to be cognizant that safety first.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
And, uh, you know, uh, so I I I, we are aware of it, looking at, you know, what you do because. You know, people have been hit and tapped, it's a big, it's a big deal to get hit by women, hurts.
Yeah, there there's some interesting things, I mean, um, so there's three classes, the first two, um, if you're seventeen years or older, you don't have to wear a helmet. So that could be a vehicle traveling in the roadway, no helmet on the rider, any type of vehicle collision could be deadly.
Well, now, and do we have the ordnance, what about our local town ordinance?
I don't know of anything on the books that speaks to this.
We do have something.
It's possible.
But is it with helmets, that, if not, that would be the place to start, probably.
Ride motorized bicycles, there is a provision in there.
Steve, do they have like a best practices that hand out or, you know?
Um, I can go and look, this was more of an introductory.
That would be great.
But I can go check if there's a best.
This is what township do.
Yeah, so I think we we take that, we can give it to Alex, and then we can figure out if we need an ordinance or we need to amend an ordinance of some sort, uh.
Or take it to PSAP, you have, you have a committee.
Yeah, you have a best practice.
Yeah, you're Psap.
Oh, yeah, and I'm on, yeah, I'm on, yeah, I'm on.
PSAP.
PSAP, so.
If I remember well, then.
This, that's a good place to start, right?
Yeah, uh, you know, so PSAP, that would be the place to go.
Right.
That's it for me.
Um, okay, that's it for you, and and, okay, so we have no time for general public comment.
The light's going up.
Yeah, okay, um, public comment, uh, when invited to speak. Come to the lectern, state your name, speak into the microphone, so that your comments can be understood and properly recorded. When speaking from a prepared statement, please send a copy to Tracy at exploremilburnshorthills.org. Speakers must limit their comments to three minutes, those utilizing Zoom or phone will also have the opportunity to speak. Okay, why don't we, how many do we have on Zoom, do we have any on Zoom?
We have two people on Zoom.
Okay. All right.
No, no hands raised yet.
Okay, so wanted, Mr. Fell, why don't you, uh, start us off?
Um, good evening, Jeffrey Fell, Short Hills resident, um, some things to look into, I, and I'm gonna update, um. If you could look at, cuz you're doing a parking, look at the parking lots, like lot fourteen, the rates are different than it is at the parking deck. Like, if you park in the parking deck, you have fifteen minutes free, you don't get it at lot fourteen, that helps in upper Milburn Avenue. Also, there has been best practices in a state, um, regulation about businesses providing insurance registration. This is a best practice, I think we had to do it, and I think it's, businesses had to know what those requirements are, we're we're about a year, two years late. If you look at our new municipal attorney from Livingston, that was like one of the first things they did about a year ago. Just to bring up the updates, there was a mention about a zoning ordinance, about what is prohibited uses, last night, the planning board, a majority. Found it not to be consistent with the master plan, just wanna bring you up to date as to that. Um, we heard about the Main Street application, we we basically come back like three years from what we have, and I asked people, you, if you haven't read what the application was, that was. Pre-Steve, in March, I'm picking that disclaimer that was done by Ryan Kalison, I think was your predecessor, who wrote it, um. It ties into the bare properties litigation, today, the municipal attorney. The new municipal attorney replaced the old municipal attorney as the defendant's attorney in that day, so I hope to meet with them, so we can talk about the issues. Unless you resolve this litigation, because this goes back to the last Township Committee meeting in December. The BA and Tara Prupus admitted on the record. That there are substantial, there were significant problems in the original ordinance that had to be amended. Unless you could establish that this entity has complied with the law, you're not gonna go anywhere in Main Street, New Jersey. I say this from experience from around two thousand seven to two thousand eight. One of the prerogatives is, for a Main Street designation is a valid CID, until we resolve this litigation, you're gonna be shot dead. Cuz one of the issues we're talking about, the five oh one C three, and it's an issue that's still going on, is whether this municipality committed fraud on the IRS. This is a controlled entity, cuz one thing that was mentioned earlier today, all the trustees are appointed. They're not elected by the people that are taxed, that's a very substantial problem, that whether it's a controlled entity. If it's a controlled entity of the municipality, you cannot be a five oh one C three designated entity, these are things to look forward, to look into. Um, I told you about the admissions, goes back to, you know, state preemption, ultra virus, no one's ever got received a written opinion, whether it's the municipality. Or the CID as to the validity of this entity under state law, and you are all fiduciaries of public trust. I wanna remind Mr. Wasserman about what happened in March and April of two thousand twenty one, when you filed the Main Street application. You admonished me and you scolded me, cuz I wrote letters to the state to point this out. You took an oath to uphold the state and federal constitution, I have a right to political street speech, you tried to re-suppress that. And if you try to do it again, I will to continue to do what I've done, but it's time to get in a room and resolve the validity of this entity. These are issues that pre-existed before the arrival of these two people and Mr. Cooper, thank you.
No hands are raised on.
No hands are raised. Okay, Vicky Powell.
Wasn't gonna speak, I thought of a couple things, uh, Vicky Powell, um, business owner, thirty nine years, this year in Milburn. Um, I wanna thank Steve, I'm, and Amanda, but Steve, for the work on the flood, because. You really, I I messaged you, I said, should I be worried, yes, go get sandbags, and I told all my neighbors the same thing, so I really thank you for all the hard work you guys did. Because you really gave us a sense of, you know, calm and, you know, and you really helped, so I just wanna thank you, that was, um. A good job, also, um, I also wanna talk about, I know the previous mayor, and I've had this, I had this discussion with her. The ma- the mayor messages that you guys are all gonna be doing, can you put on the end of them, shop local, let's support town, um, I think it's very important that we drill this into the residents' head. Um, because quite frankly, they, some of them don't come and support our town, I've had this discussion with Steve. You know, on certain events, when they come in here, oh, I've never been in this store before, never been down here, I think so, other surrounding towns, they. Support their business districts by putting it on Facebook, uh, can the town get a little bit more active in in getting the message out there? Support the local, even put it on the flashing board over here, I mean, we gotta drill in our heads, we're the ones that everyone supports, the Little Leagues and all that stuff, the. All the uh fundraisers, I mean, let's, you know, let's reciprocate, let's get the message out there, support local, that should be the theme. Um, so that was one, um. Uh, Girls Night Out, first meeting coming up next week, we're getting ready to start planning, so that's exciting, that's exciting.
Buckle up.
Yeah, buckle up. Um, I, in regards to the art that Amanda, what you were talking about, are you gonna put QR codes on the, on the the things? To bring it back to the Explore website, which I think it would be great, that was my, that's, that was that, and thank you for the. And thank you for the mural. It's a very important piece of artwork in town. It was our first piece of artwork in town. Everyone takes pictures in front of it, all the political, everything. It, so it's very important. So I'm glad to see that you are taking care of it because it is very important. Um, I would suggest that we talk to people, not being benches against it, because I think that's the problem. Why it's chipping so much in certain areas. So we should keep that, that space free. That's it. Thank you. Congratulations on being the new chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Urso.
Carrie Urso, five fourteen Melbourne Avenue in Short Hills. Happy New Year. Just have a couple of questions tonight. I'd like to know how many seats were up for appointment? In my opinion, it looks like it's the same players that have received volunteer interest appointments. I've recently heard the word self-serving. I'd like to ask each member of this committee, have you received any benefits from the Sid on your positions here? Or a member or member of the community or the, um, the surrounding town, um, surrounding, um, districts? I heard Ms. Lieberberg state this evening. Um, the publication that was presented for the new magazine that you, um, that was up for introduction, that it was for free. Clearly, the representative had stated during her presentation that they depend on support from the businesses. So can the executive director perhaps explain how and from whom is this free? Um, I'd also like to ask, how many members of the committee own commercial property? And where's the accountability for the lack of property owners on the representation of this board? Um, the reason why I'm saying is, is for the record, I'd like this, the members to know. Together with my family, we own ten storefronts. And that's why I'm concerned about the, the accountability of the present, of the representation of property owners on this board. I'm not only a merchant, and I am a property owner, and I am a landlord. Many of our properties are leased at a discounted rate comparison to many other landlords. But that's a personal, um, discretion and decisions and a business decision. Mostly because we compete with e-commerce, which has been a longstanding. There are tenants with judgments and tenants that are in the rears. However, we still must sustain our financial responsibilities, whether it's mortgages, taxes, sewer. Sid assessments, solid waste collections that must be paid. In thirty years since the shuttering of Saks Fifth Avenue in nineteen ninety four, it was December thirty one. It took the metropolitan, which we've all been waiting for on Upper Melbourne Avenue. Wouldn't you say that, Lex? You must be excited. I'm excited for you. Um, so for Upper Melbourne Avenue, Morris Avenue and Farley, which is one of the districts on Upper Melbourne Avenue. Now it's clear, the elephant in the room is it's constantly, we're talking about downtown and Upper Melbourne Avenue. I know why the focus is on Upper Melbourne Avenue, and I'm sure you're all adults and you know why Upper Melbourne Avenue is a number one focus. But you have to remember that there's four other districts besides downtown. And there's three other districts besides Upper Melbourne Avenue and downtown that have been totally neglected. Since the groundbreaking in February of two thousand twenty one, I have to say. It's actually embarrassing that members of the TC, two former TC members that actually sat on the TC board. Were invited by Garden Homes to that groundbreaking. And do you know that those members not only didn't even respond with the exception of one, because I know that for fact. However, now you are jumping on the opportunity and you are.
You are, you are, you are well beyond.
Ms. Lieberberg, I know, I know you're so excited to sit in that position.
Please round, uh, finish up your comments.
Thank you so much. But now you want to take advantage of and jump off the opportunity of the metropolitan. Something that Upper Melbourne Avenue has been waiting for for thirty years. You both as TC members had the opportunity to not only help the businesses on Upper Melbourne, but you have failed your constituents. And you have failed your property owners. I'd also like to say in December of two thousand twenty three.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you, ma'am. In December of two thousand twenty three, I put in Oprah's, in, uh, and I was responded by Mr. Ryan Cooper. I simply asked by Oprah request, I wanted a list of events, dates and locations.
Ms. Urso, I'm terribly sorry.
Okay, well, I was going to give you the email so you could review the response that I got from this attorney, that this is, that it was. You have to read it. It's just ridiculous. And welcome back. Now the games begin. Here's your email. You might want to make a copy for the entire board and, and maybe we can get a next formation.
Are there any other comments from the public?
Considering you had three public comments, it's ridiculous.
Thank you. Okay, our next meeting is Thursday, February fifteenth at six thirty. May I have a motion to adjourn?
We don't, we don't address the comments like it's.
Well, I haven't read the comments. None of us have read the comments.
Oh, I meant the other comments.
Oh, the pattern here is no.
No, no, I, I, yes, uh, Steve, is there anything you'd like to address specifically?
Um. The, the only question I suppose, um, that I want to answer is, um. Ms. Urso asked, how is the magazine free? I, I, the, it was about distribution. It's free to receive.
It's free to receive.
It's also free to participate in. Um, so there are stories where there's no compensation from the person being featured. Um, you can choose to sponsor an ad. Um, so I, the, the question I, I think she was getting at is. How do you receive it? It's, it's distributed for free. That's what we meant by free. Uh, unless any of the board members have specific, uh, specific questions.
Well, I just think it, it's, you know, we're doing ourselves a disservice to have, you know, these open comments. Remain open for that period of time, even if Mr. Feld, you know, if he's talking about. The veracity and validity of his case or such. And we're changing municipal attorneys, is that something we can do to sit down with him and make sure that he understands? What that he gets a audience, you know, you know. I, I.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a, uh, it's an issue not with the Sid but with the municipality.
Hey, Mr. Cooper.
Uh, let, let Mr. Cooper.
No, but so I, I'll just, uh, echo that. Yeah, so the, the, um, the Sid's not a party to the litigation.
Okay, but I think it's, we can say that here because then there's not like, it doesn't look like we're hiding something. We have transparency. So, Mr. Feld, if that's the case, then I will try to bridge a meeting with our municipal attorney. Who works at the privilege of the TC.
I just like, you were new to this thing, but part of it is, the, the answer was filed by the municipal attorney. He did not include the Sid.
We'll take care of, we'll take care of that offline.
And when Mr. Cooper was retained, he was told he could not get involved in the litigation.
And then, you know, the whole idea of, the whole idea of shop local, I love that idea. I think we can look into that. I think that is a great idea, uh, to, to, to proffer and profit, you know, push that forward. Girls' night, I think we should have a guys' night out. Uh, every night's a guys' night out.
It'd be your house.
And then, uh, uh, for Ms. Urso, if she owns ten storefronts, um. Why is, can she be on our list of volunteers in that twenty four, make twenty five and jump her on that list and have some participation? Um, let's open invite to Ms. Urso to jump on that list and participate.
I, I, I think I defer to Mr. Cooper, but, uh, Ms. Urso is a litigant against the organization. Um, I think there's some inherent conflicts and let's also remind that, uh, Mr. Feld is the attorney for that litigant. And you, as a township committee member, are a defendant in that case. Um, so I think, Mr. Cooper can speak to, uh.
We have property owners, they pay the taxes in this town. At the end of the day. You know, the township committee is elected by the residents to enforce, to, to represent their interests. And the property owners of the residents pay the taxes that support everything that goes on on this dais. So I want to make sure that. We shouldn't have a resident or a property owner that unhappy, uh, without trying to bridge that gap and make sure that. That, that, that it's being.
No, I, I mean, I'm sensitive to like your design. That I've sat here since day one, I think, and we have certain people, members of the public who. Will be angry and present things and it's a never-ending, you know, we'll answer questions, maybe the, the next meeting. And it, it's very frustrating from our perspective because we try to answer, we totally. Have super efforts to satisfy all districts of the Sid, for example. That's been a theme from day one. So it's very difficult. I totally agree. There is a quite a bit of history here. And, and so I'm not sure what else to say other than.
It was.
It's, it's, yeah, yeah.
I'll walk through the history and we'll try to work. I mean, it's just from, you know, I, as long as I've known you, Stephen, if there was ever that type of, type of, uh.
Try to resolve.
Try to, you know, if there was that type of angst between you and the township committee or the Sid or something, I'd want to resolve, just as I'd want it. I don't want to see that type of angst with any resident or property owner, especially of ten storefronts, as they say.
But I, I, that's very, I just want to say that that's your sentiment is, I'm sorry. Your, your sentiment is very well, is spot on. And I, I, you know, I think if there was a way to. If there was a way to sit down and, and, you know, I, I, I just don't know if there's a resolution. You know, because first, you know, from the beginning, um. It just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like we get anywhere. But, but I'm, but I'm always, I'm always, uh, just for the record, I'm always happy to attend the meetings and listen to try and, uh. I'm always open and I don't speak for anybody else.
I, I just want to, I, I.
And I know that, and I know that there is litigation.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that, so there is litigation.
So, and maybe Mr. Cooper can explain the mediation process, because there now is an opportunity to sit down and deal with this. Um, but I just want Ben to be aware, um, the Ursos and Bear Properties have instructed the Sid in writing. Um, that we are not allowed to promote their business on social media. We are not allowed to promote their properties on our available property site. They will not attend our events. Um, and so they've been very, very clear that they want nothing to do with us over the last three years. I think to editorialize, if they were suddenly interested in being part of our advisory committee, then I think those other things shouldn't stand either. And so that, as Stephen said, history is important here. Um, they, they have not been the victims in this. They have come to us.
Be carefully editorializing.
They have come to us and told us that we cannot assist them. Um, that was not our choice. That was their choice. But perhaps you can speak to the litigation mediation process.
Um, so I, I think there's a, um, a number of, of several points. So there, there is litigation, um, uh, Mr. So is the party. Uh, the, Mr. Feld, uh, who's present, uh, this evening is the attorney. Uh, who, uh, has been litigating that the objective of the litigation is to get rid of the Sid, right? It's to destroy the Sid. It is to invalidate the ordinance that created this entity. So, um, I think that is certainly a material consideration, um, important to understand, um. Uh, and, and, but again, you know, this Sid is not a party to it, um. With respect to the membership on an advisory committee, without commenting on any particular individual's interests or inclusion or, or omission from that list. You know, the, the composition, um. Of that board is ultimately a potential decision that you as trustees have to make. And you have a fiduciary obligation, uh, as trustees to the entity. Um, and so, um, that's a decision for you to individually make and then the collective majority will, will end, end up. Uh, deciding, uh, and there may be differences of opinion on that. Um, but certainly among the potential decisions that go into weighing, uh, any individual's membership on that board. Advising you as a board in general, as to your fiduciary obligations are to take into account, uh, any individual's, uh, participation, contribution. Um, uh, demeanor, uh, et cetera, um, in. In how they'll carry out their duties as advisory board members and representatives of the Sid. And I certainly think absolutely material, uh, to that decision is, is whether an individual has the objective of destroying the very organization. Uh, that with, that they seek to be, um, uh, a member of the advisory board or even a member of this board trustees or not. Um, but again, while that decision is ma, material, um. In general, again, you know, it's ultimately a potential decision for you as individual trustees to make and then the board is a, a whole in, uh, in a vote. So hopefully that has helped frame at least the context. Can't tell you what to do or how to vote, but give you the tools and the parameters within which you should be approaching these decisions.
Sure, a lot of words right there, uh.
That's what lawyers get paid by the word for.
A lot of words. Uh, I think that, you know, from that context of understanding that. We are one community, uh, and to be successful, we have to all operate under that mindset. And then this needs to be resolved and. We should work as a team together to try to resolve it. And I'll leave it at that for now.
That's good. And, and, uh, Mr. Cooper, could you just give us a reminder of, um, uh, we are not party to the litigation, um.
That was each choice of the municipal attorney.
So, um, what is your advice in terms of any board members, staff, et cetera, having any ex parte communications with? Um, the litigants or the litigant's attorney?
Um, so I would, I would advise, um, extreme caution. Um, because again, and it goes back, and this is again, not to, you know, it is a lot of words, but it's, it's to. Give you the framework, um, in, in the context, because I'm not telling any one of you, uh, what to do, but I need to give you the tools with. Which to, um, be knowledgeable so that you can, you can exercise your discretion. Um, in a manner that's good for, for your, your obligations and good for the organization. So, uh, you know, I, I, I wouldn't, uh, you know, advise extreme caution, um, uh. Because although we're not a party, um, uh, the Sid is an instrumentality. Um, in, in, in the non-term of art, uh, uh, manner of speaking of the, um, municipality. Uh, there is obviously that relationship. Uh, the, the other, other thing which I would say is important, and again, I, I have to speak only generals. We have to go into a closed session and I can talk about specific advice. But I would be very cautious, um, in speaking to any individual who has, at least in my, uh, I think. Two, three-year tenure as, as counsel to the board, uh, has, um, persistently, uh, over that period of time. You know, sought to generate issues, uh, that, that could lead to litigation, right? So I've seen a lot of threats of litigation, a lot of accusations of, of inappropriate conduct. Um, uh, uh, what, what I would say is individuals who are, are looking to, you know, um. Uh, subject the, the, the board and, uh, subject the Sid to, to further legal expense and, and, um, scrutiny. Um, and that scrutiny is not, because it, um, legal expense is just litigation, warrantless litigation, again, with the objective of, I think. Ultimately destroying the Sid as an entity. I think that's, I, I believe that's the profess goal, but if, if others are, uh, if I'm mistaken, please educate me.
Well, I think it's hard to say what our understanding of the profess goal is. I think the profess goal should be professionalism, civility. And everybody working together to enhance the betterment of the town. That should be the profess goal. Uh, I don't know how we can read their mind or they can, you know, so I wouldn't suggest that we're trying to read their mind.
I'm just referring to their public statements.
Oh, right, so.
You should refer to also the public statements that the TC will litigate, not mediate.
So, so, you know, I think if there's anything we can do, and, and I'll, I'll take some, I'll, I'll look with the municipal attorney to take some steps.
And, and just one other question for my own, um, um, Mr. Feld, who is present, is the attorney, uh, for the, the Ursos. Um, to sit down and talk, um, I would imagine you would oppose that as well, since he is the attorney and we are. Potential witnesses in a case, um, no one in this, on this board should engage with Mr. Feld as he is the attorney.
That, that is my, that's been my, that's my, been my recommendation. And again, I could discuss it further.
I just want to clarify for the record.
In closed session, but, um, given the repeated threats and other accusations that I've found to be. Un, uh, unwarranted and not actually supported, uh, yes, that has been my.
Threats and, and aggressive behavior.
Threats and, wait a second, the first immediate.
Mr. Feld.
Mr. Feld.
May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion. May I have a second? Meeting, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.